All right, I'm gonna call this study session to order. All right, well, welcome everybody. Julie, thank you for driving all the way down here to help us out. We've got a number of things here that we want to discuss to talk about before we get into our goals. Julie's been kind enough to put together a list there of things that we'll go over. A lot of this is informational, kind of over boardsmanship. It's a great time to ask questions. We've got Julie, who's got a lot of knowledge she can share with us, and anyone else. I would like to start with Lisa, to introduce Lisa. I know you probably know everybody here already, but Lisa, our newest board member. Welcome to the meeting, and as I told you earlier, this is a little bit more informal setting. You've sat through these, as you told me already, so I'm probably gonna tell you a lot of things that you already know.
It's always good to hear it again, I need your prayers, it doesn't hurt.
Welcome to the first meeting, I'm glad you got sworn in in time to participate.
Thank you, it's an honor to be here with everyone.
All right, so then we will get started with item two, Board Operations Communications Protocol.
Yes, hello.
Julie, I will let you start.
Hello, I love when people say, she has so much experience, I think they're calling me old. I've just been around a long time, started when I was ten, so. My name is Julie Bacon, I'm Director of Leadership Development for the Arizona School Boards Association, and it's always great to be in Yuma. This is one of my favorite places to go, and Lisa probably heard me say that before when I worked with Yuma Union. No, but I mean Yuma itself, I don't wanna, not gonna play funny.
Good clarification.
Hey, remember, I was an elected board member before, so I know how to. But I did serve on the board in Paradise Valley for 12 years, and have been on ASBA's staff for six, and was an officer at the Board of Directors before that, so. So I want to do just some introductions, you know, name, oh, I think we can go to the next slide. Click. Or not. So, let's do your name, years of service, and what have you done for fun this summer?
All right.
So who wants to start? Okay.
I'll start. My name's Keith Ware, I have a whopping three and a half years' service on the board. What have I done this summer for fun? Going back to Canada, go fishing again.
Yes, good deal.
All right, I'm Jeff Stoner, and I have less than one year of board experience. And I just got back from being over, my mom's up in Hever where I got to use my ugly stick and do a little fishing.
Okay, good.
So yeah, then, so yeah, that's my fun for the summer.
I didn't know if an ugly stick was fishing or golfing.
It's an actual fishing stick, yeah.
Maybe David Barra, approximately six months as a board member, and what I did this summer, Yosemite, visit Yosemite.
Lisa. Years of service today? What have I done for fun this summer? I was able to travel back to my home state of Wisconsin and spend an excellent time visiting, having retired last July and not having the constraints to get back. Very nice to travel with no real end point, just when I want to come back.
My name is Corey, and six months on the board, and have got to do quite a bit of fun this summer. I did some time in San Diego for work, and then brought my family with me, and then time fishing, camping, went back to San Diego for a week camping on the bay, so yeah, just got back last week.
All right, Duane.
Okay, I'm Duane Shepherd, and I am coming into my 40th year of education. And my wife and I and my brothers and sisters, we were in Savannah and Charleston this past summer. We had a delightful time.
Very nice. My name's Lucia Munoz, I'm the HR Director, and this is starting my 14th year in this district, my 20th year in education. And it's hard for HR to have fun during the summer because we're busy, so we're gonna postpone our fun until like September or October.
Very good, very good.
How to get everyone hired.
That's it. And as of today, everyone is hired. So, nice.
Well, I'm Leanne McGinnis, I am entering my 28th year in education. And we went to Beach House for a week, and then I did a quick trip to Maine, I had never been there before. And it was delightful, I bought two sweatshirts.
Oh, yeah.
Monica Navarro, I'm Executive Assistant to the Board, and to pretend that I've been here for 24 years. I've been serving the board for three, going on, starting my fourth year, so I'm very excited, here to serve anyways.
And what did you do for fun?
We escaped the heat, and we went out to San Diego for a week, so that was very nice, and then we came back to the heat.
Yes.
Dennis Ponder, over 20 years of service in education, nine here with District One. For fun, I started playing softball again now that I don't coach anymore, so I have some evenings to do what I want. And then started playing some pickleball with the kids, so. I don't move as well as I used to, so I'm having a hard time accepting that. I'm working on anger management right now.
I'm gonna come back over here.
All right, Danny Acosta, this is number 26 in education. So it's been a fun ride all over District One, so seen a lot of things happen, come and go, a lot of things stayed, so like Duane, Duane has stayed. What have I done, fun for this summer, packing up one office and moving into another office. That was sad and fun, and so just here to help whatever capacity I can hand, so. Welcome aboard, congratulations, and good to see you, everybody.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So as I said, I'm Julie, I don't think we've ever met, Danny. I have been in education for a long time, so, board service and working. I did two, I did two trips this summer. One was I went to visit my son in Tacoma, Washington, had a place on the water, lovely. The other one was I went back to Pennsylvania to visit my family, and I, one was a vacation and the other one was a trip. You know what I mean. Lots of time in a car from this person to that person. Anyway, so if we go to the next slide, we'll just talk briefly, we've done this before, all of us, with the exception of Lisa, so. We just listen, you know, participate, ask questions, you know, positive intent, we're all here for the same thing, and to do good for students. Be truthful and honest, respectful, and seek first to understand, then be understood. And that is my, that's the one I have the most problem with, particularly in conversations with my husband, so. We'll go to the next slide, and this is such a great moment for you to talk about communication protocols. You have new staff in your executive team in district office, you've got a new governing board member who's not been a governing board member before, so the timing of this is just impeccable. I don't know if we planned it like this, or it just kinda happened, but it's great. So, with the next slide, we really talk about communication protocols being a key part of the work that boards and superintendents and administrative staffs do together. So you can build trust, have mutual understanding of what communication is going to look like, where it's gonna come from. It really does foster collaboration and reduces that non-productive conflict. So, conflict in and of itself, not bad, it's when it's not productive that's bad, so. And let's go to the next slide, and I'm just gonna kind of dig in, you do have the PowerPoint in the folder that I provided, and here are some of, just some of the policies around communication that exist in your policy manual, so. BHC, Board Communication with Staff, with the public, and then all of those KE policies, which are the public concerns and complaints, and that, kind of that chain of command, if you will. How do we deal with something if we're a board member and we get a complaint? So, those are policies I would really look at as a new board member in particular, because every district is, might be slightly different, and they might have different exhibits and regulations that are attached to those policies. Okay, next slide. So, we're gonna really go through, I think you guys probably have a really solid process already set up, so I think we can probably quickly go through this, but do you get regular communication from the superintendent? And how often?
Minimum every Friday.
Okay, every Friday? And that's a summary of, a summary report of what's going on in the week?
Weekly report of what's going on, yep.
Okay. And is it, is the format good, is there anything you want to change about that? Is there anything you want to change about that, or the board wants to change?
So I've already made a slight change in what I think reads a little bit easier and easier for me to follow in the way it's broken out, so I'd just be interested to see if you guys appreciated that, or if you're indifferent, that's fine as well, just curious what your thoughts are in that approach.
I think it's gonna take a couple Fridays going through it, for me anyway, I mean, I noticed the difference and didn't think it was bad at all.
Okay.
Just don't know, it's something new, so.
Gotcha, sure, fair enough.
I liked it, I didn't have any problems with it.
I mean, it was easier to read and follow from just like a standardization of like media, and it's like, it's all documents, so. I mean, from a marketing standpoint, it was easier, okay, this is the area I want to click on, and so, yeah, I appreciate that. The only thing that I realized, but maybe it'll take, maybe it's how it's being sent, is it actually sends to like your other versus your focused mail, so, and that may just be the way that mine is set up, is that, so even like at work, there's like people within gallon company that it sends directly, but if it's like an outside, sometimes it goes to the other, not junk, but there's like a focus emails, but probably because of like whatever platform you're doing it in.
Gotcha.
So to me, I was like, he said he was gonna send the weekly report, but I just had to go to like the non-focus emails, and then it was there. I was like, okay, but that's just for, it's going to us, so we just know that, and maybe in that other.
Yeah, you may have to also just like give it permission.
Exactly, put it as a highlighted email, yeah, so, I was only, but I, very easy to read.
Okay, thank you.
Great, is there anything that you are not getting regular communication in terms of weekly, quarterly, monthly? Do you get a quarterly budget update or a monthly budget update, or what is that, has that been like, just, or just at board meetings?
The budget updates usually come as they're required through statute, so, well, there are monthly very 30,000 foot, and then the budgets themselves, as they need to be updated or voted on, those are presented as well.
The Friday report is pretty.
Thorough.
Yes.
Sounds like, yeah, great.
I do, really quick on the, what I've noticed differently that Dennis is doing that has helped me is, if there is questions from the board, then he'll, I mean, it's just going directly to him. He has like answered, but to all of us, and to me, I think that's been super helpful, because hearing about it like at a board meeting, or just knowing that a fellow board member had a question, and then he's responding to all of us collectively, has really helped me understand where my other board members are, what questions they're asking for, but then I may have had that same question, and then he's just, instead of responding individually, that's really helped me clarify things, so.
Great, and that's what's next, right? One member's request for additional information results in all members getting the same information, and special communications are done for all board members. So it's just great practice for the superintendent to keep every board member with the same information, so, great. Let's go to the next slide. So, here is where we, this is our first area of conversation. I sent this ahead of time to Dennis and Keith, there were some questions about the word agreements, because it sounded a little bit maybe legal business, I'm not sure what it was.
And I can elaborate on it a little bit, the idea is not to limit a board member's ability to communicate or have their independent thought process, and agreements tend to start to do that, right? We didn't agree to be able to do that, therefore you can't be quiet. So I didn't want it to come across as, sorry, we didn't think about it this year, we'll think about that next year type thing, so. More of a, here's the ground rules, there's always exceptions to those, agreement just kind of by and you remember.
Okay, so if you go to the next slide, I came up with some other kind of descriptors of what that might look like, whether it's expectations or understandings, guidelines, and these are really just about treating each other with respect, being prepared as a board member. I think as we go through, maybe that's what we should do, is go through them and then come back to this slide and decide what we want to call it, once you get a flavor for what it, it looks like. So it's the first time agreements has come up, and I, so I thank you for that, because that may be something that other boards have felt uncomfortable with, so we'll look at that and see how to massage it in our end so that we can make sure everyone is okay. So these, these statements are, super, now we can go to, back to, yes. No, I'm sorry, go back to, there we go. Superintendent and board members will treat each other and staff with respect. Superintendent will acknowledge receipt of feedback shared by board members and confirm issue will be addressed. Superintendent will respect and acknowledge the perspective of board members as representatives of the community, and support, not surprises. So this is that, we're not, I'm not gonna drop a bomb on you if you don't drop a bomb on me, we're gonna, we're gonna work together on this. Any issues with any of those, anything? Everybody?
I think that's pretty basic human.
Yeah, human dignity. Okay, now we can go to the emergency communication, there we go. So I always talk about, and when we talk about emergency, an emergency in the district that I served in is different than an emergency in a rural community, right? That the superintendent probably in my district couldn't possibly keep up with how many police were visiting the 45 campuses we have, right? But in a rural community, totally different, because someone is gonna call you about 10 seconds after the police pull into, you know, the school. So, I just wanted to have, for you all to have some conversation about what is it that you want to hear from the superintendent about along the lines of an emergency?
So I had experiences, because I have a couple of people that like to ask these questions, and they get it through Facebook, right, since Facebook gets the lockdowns quicker than board members do, and I get it. I don't, I don't necessarily want to have the staff stop the progress of dealing with the situation just to send me a text or an email to the board members to explain what's going on. So it's easy for me to let them know, hey, I know they're busy, but as soon as they get a moment, they're gonna let me know. And so I don't bother the superintendent when somebody calls me or sends me a text with a Facebook post that, you know, Hila Vista got locked down because the police are issuing a warrant in a nearby neighborhood, right? I mean, to me, those, those are important, but they're not critical that I need to be able to answer that question. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but I don't want to shackle the administration with notifying us at the expense of dealing with the protocols.
I agree with you 100% on that, but you know, when the urgency's happening, what are we gonna do about it as the board members? We might be informed about it, but how are we gonna make it any better and worse?
You're not, you're just gonna be able to reassure people if they call you.
Yeah, exactly, so there's really, to me, there's no urgency to, you need to tell us first. I don't really feel like it needs to be that way, I appreciate to know when it happens, but also, we just had an incident with some asbestos, and Mr. Ponder handled it like a professional. I mean, immediately, it was already out there in the public, Jennifer Blackwell knew about it, the public knew about it, we handled it, this is the way it is. Very transparent, very open, and very immediate, and so, you know, the way that that handled, I can tell that we're on the right track, that we have nothing to worry about.
Right, so would you prefer, when the superintendent is able, to get notifications via text, email, what's the best method?
Email.
Email?
And I think it's when you have enough of the information to provide a better story. Of course, if it's, if it's a active situation, and, and things are taking place, you know, somebody from the district should probably get ahold of the president, say, hey, we have an active shooter, or a building's on fire, you know, just so that, I mean, I can reach out to the rest of the board members without breaking.
Open meeting law.
There you go, thank you, so that way you don't have to try to reach out to five board members, but that way, you know, something of catastrophic, you know, these lockdowns because they're serving a warrant, or, you know, something like that, but if it's, if it's real, I think the board president should know, and then I can, I can get ahold of the rest of the board members, we can talk. And then information will come in as a, as, as you have a story to tell, right?
Right, now email, I think is the best, because that's what you're doing already, so why change, you know, reinvent the wheel? You know, why make it more complicated? You know, and email is what we get for normal day-to-day, so it could be the same way on, on an emergency situation as well.
The only caveat you might have with that is a catastrophic situation where you might say, read, you know, send a text, you need to read your email. Right, because if you do have something like an active shooter or a building turning down, there's gonna be a lot of commotion in the community, and they're gonna be reaching out to you, so.
What is the, from the open meeting law perspective, because that's a question I've had and should I should have asked before, is if someone's just relaying information, so if Keith is just sending a text to all of us versus making a decision, what's acceptable and what's not? Like from that piece, like if he's saying, hey, you guys, can you be here at 5:30 instead of 5:45? I mean, something simple to something like very serious.
Right.
What can we do or not do when it comes to the five of us, or more than three of us, excuse me?
The way it's written in open meeting law is, board members cannot discuss decisions, so anything that's gonna come to the board for a decision, we, we can't discuss more than just two board members. So, you and I can talk about something that we're gonna vote on at some point or make a decision on, but you can't then go to Lisa, and I can't go to Jeff, because that makes a quorum.
Yeah, that I understand clearly, but like in this situation, like you were on a school tour and something happened, and you wanted to just let us know, if you just sent the five of us, or four of us a text and said, hey, this happened, that, palm crop, everything's good, I just wanted to let you know, you're just telling, right?
That's just an information only, and if, there's no response, there can't, there should just not be multiple responses back. Right, so if he's sending that, you can, if you're all copied on it, which probably would be better if you did it individually, if possible.
Yeah.
You know, thank you would be appropriate, there'd be nothing else. Now, if, if it's something like, hey, this, the fire happened yesterday, we gotta figure out a plan, we're having an emergency meeting tomorrow, here are the things we're gonna discuss, then I wouldn't respond at all, and just say, you know, other than thank you for the information. So I think you just need to keep it as kind of professional and neutral as you possibly can.
Yeah, I guess there's some things, like it's something that came up with the Tom, the appointment of Lisa, of, which is fine, it's my, not my decision, it's Tom as the county superintendent, but I was getting information from random community members, which is fine, but I don't know at what point would that have been appropriate to been like Keith just saying to us, or an opportunity to keep us informed, hey, there's eight people that are being interviewed, or four, or two, or I don't even know, I'm gonna sit in on, just so you know, because, again, I felt kind of silly, which is fine, but when someone's like, oh yeah, I was interviewed, or this other person was interviewed, and I'm like, and they're like, oh, do you know that? These Andersons just got it, that's great, and I'm just like, am I supposed to be like, yeah, I knew, duh? I'm on vacation, but I read wonderful things about her, so I'm super stoked, but to me, I just thought it's that an opportunity for us as a board to be able to keep us a little bit more in the loop? And I don't think that that's Dennis's role per se, because he wasn't in charge of finding the replacements, so yeah.
And I can expand a little bit on that, I wanted to reach out and tell everybody, but I couldn't until Tom told me that she had accepted, and so I, if she didn't, if Lisa didn't accept, and I told you that she got it, then I'm spreading.
I mean, more even before, like the process, because I didn't know, yeah.
We learned, I found out the night before what time I was supposed to be there.
Yeah, but how, I guess, I don't know, maybe this is in the space, maybe it's later, like, how did that even come to be? Is that a norm, because I've been on the, on the roll six months. Is that a norm that a president of a school board is involved in it? I don't know, I mean, I thought that there might be a special election, I literally am that naive about how this process works. So I just am wondering if it was an opportunity, and I'm sure there's lots of lessons in it, and my expectation was definitely not that Dennis would do it, and then I also was like, well, is it unrealistic that Tom? Because, you know, but then later when they're like, oh yeah, President Keith was in there, I'm like, wait, maybe I don't know how this whole process works, so that's only, that's for this conversation, what are our norms? And what can we?
Well, it's really not dictated by you, it's dictated by the county superintendent.
Correct, I knew that.
And it's different in every county.
It's case by case, because I found out that no other president sat on any of the other appointments in his tenure. However, his predecessor included the presidents.
So you requested that, or did Tom request you?
I asked if I was gonna be requested so I could clear my schedule, right?
Yeah.
And he said, sure, you can, you can observe.
Yeah.
So I go, okay, and then the night before. I, I knew of two other times people being interviewed before I knew a time I should be there.
But maybe that is like as a, because he's gonna get information, as a, you're gonna get information that we're not gonna get, which is fine, but for the sake of transparency and clarity, like, I don't know, for me, just, and I didn't need to respond to those community members, because none of their business, but I just was like, oh cool, we got a new board member, and they're like, well, who told you? I'm like, just someone on Facebook.
Yeah, well, yeah.
So it is tough, because it's not at our, like I said, I can't say anything until Tom, until he, he receives the acknowledgement that they're gonna accept the position, and then he public, makes it public information.
Correct, that makes sense.
So, so that was.
But could you have said, hey, I'm gonna be part of these interviews, is anyone else interested? And/or do we need to have a meeting, I don't know, I don't know what that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was 9:30 the night before.
And, and I think it's unusual that the board president was included, I've not experienced that before.
When I was appointed, Barbara Foote was, was there in the interviews, and.
So that is something to think about.
Yeah.
If you have another resignation, which hopefully you won't, to kind of beforehand, now you know what this looks like.
Yeah.
You can kind of create it as needed, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, and, and again, I mean, we can set a norm to it, but then if the superintendent decides that doesn't want to go through that process again, then we're not included.
Yeah, a different superintendent might say something different.
Or the same, I mean, he may decide that it was just easier for him to do it on himself and, and handle it, so that's completely out of our control.
Yeah, decision, that's exactly what I thought, so I guess when I heard the other, for me, it's just knowledge, just to be able to share the information, because I thought too, I was like, I thought, what I heard was that Tom, as the county superintendent, does all this, and we weren't, but again, as a board member, I, it just would have given me some clarity, not like I would have any deciding factor, but that's where, and again, when I started seeing Dennis's responses to some emails, I was like, oh cool, I just feel like I'm more in the know, it's just more clear, I mean, it's more transparent, and that's, I think, one of the efforts we're trying to do, so.
And I think, so that's just as you move forward, right?
Yeah, and.
Looking back and, and then writing down.
I think in this case, that was just unusual for Tom, because I was the first president that had offered. Because I was finding out, I was asking to find out if I should clear my schedule at work to be able to attend, because my understanding was that it was required, because, well, that's what I experienced.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not required, and so, and it just happened to be that he went on vacation for a week, and so, you know, and then he came back and started the interview, so. I'm pretty sure it's because it was out of his norm for that, but I think going forward, if we have anybody who we have to appoint, we'll have a better.
Understanding of what that's gonna be.
Of the process.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So going back to the emergency communication, who should the board contact if they've a question during an emergency situation? Who is not the superintendent, because the superintendent, in fact, is involved in the emergency? So, in general, it's usually another, an assistant superintendent, or it's, it's Monica. It's the Monica in every district.
Within the Emergency Operations Plan folders that we have for all of the schools, I did create a document in there that lists all of the executive admin and their assistants, and I'll go over it with principals again this week at Admin Advance, but it's like a text group for emergency vehicles on your campus. So that way, they'll always be informed, so any one of us that's on the executive admin will get that information along with our secretary. So that's only if emergency vehicles are on there, so that doesn't mean that you guys would want to necessarily know. It might be that somebody was having a diabetic emergency, it's just, it's the same thing when you're far away. You know, those of us that were out at east schools, we want to make sure that we're informing, because sometimes it's very easy for them to see if something's happening across the street, but. So there is that group text that the principals.
But the boards are not, the board is not.
They are not on that, no.
And they shouldn't be.
And there's, there's certain thing that I think is important to say while we're talking about emergency communication, part of operational security, is any information that we receive is not public information, except for the situations being handled, because any details that you give to people is, yeah, that's why our response plans are not public information. You can't do a public request for emergency response for an active shooter, because you're basically laying out how we're gonna take care of it, and can be, you know.
Giving the roadmap to the shooter.
Yes, and so we may get some confidential, confidential information, and it's just better to handle all of that as, I'm not sharing that information until everything has been completed, and just share, hey, school's handling it, we understand that it's. And just share, hey, school's handling it. We understand that it's taking place. And, and let, let the district handle it without us making it worse for them.
Just like in law enforcement, you have your PIO. You let PIO handle it, even though you were part of that agency, you still need to wait and never discuss anything that's ongoing. For example, a Palm Cross school situation, you can't comment on that until it's fully investigated. You let that, leave that to the people that are assigned to it. That's why we have PIO. And that's the way I look at it.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, great. So we're going to say that the board secretary will be the contact for the board. Okay. So you know, the emergency management plans, again, not public knowledge. If you're not familiar with them, that is something that you can now have a study or an executive session around that just the board would be involved in. Under what circumstances an emergency board meeting would be called? I mean, obviously it would be something really big, that you needed to do something immediately. And then how you're contacted, so. So then the next slide, superintendent and board communication. So board member questions regarding district operations and/or concerns or feedback received should be directed to the superintendent. It seems so simple, but it's not always. Okay, so here's one of these agreements that we should be.
I know, sorry to go back to that.
No, 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 go back.
So is the understanding, I don't want to use the word agreement, the understanding that as board members, we will go first to Dennis.
Yes.
Before we drop any bombs at a meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I agree with that. I just want to make sure it works.
Yeah.
Dennis or myself, or the president, right? So there may be things that, that you're not going to discuss with the superintendent. I can't imagine what any of those are, but that's always, especially like an evaluation criteria, right? If we're doing a board evaluation, you may not want to have that conversation first with Dennis.
Yeah, this is those questions regarding district operations or concerns. Yeah. So I can see maybe a feedback piece, but when it comes to like, because again, we don't know. This is, I mean, this is, we're here once a month and I know it's been more than once a month.
Hopefully we slow down a little bit.
You guys are the experts, not us.
That's, that's what they promised, right Cory? Yeah, so this is just like, you get a call from a parent or, you know, I saw something on a campus that I'm concerned about. Who do I, this is, you know, you're, you're going to talk to the superintendent directly. And that's 99.9% of the time that's the case, unless it's a massive district and then sometimes they assign it to somebody else. Okay, so superintendent board communication, and this is again, one of those agreements. So we'll come back to that. The superintendent board members will be respectful towards staff and board members should be respectful of staff's time. Direction is only given at board meetings when a majority of the board votes to give direction. So this cuts down on this board member having this project they want done and that board member having that project they want done. And, you know, you're really, you're making decisions as a group. Board members remain impartial and share both positive and negative feedback about the district with the superintendent. If you get positive feedback, you should shout it from the mountaintop, because you don't always get that. Board members will reserve judgment and refrain from investigating concerns instead of deferring to the chain of command. And that is in those KE policies. And then support not surprises. So if we're asking the board members to not, to support not surprise, we're going to ask the superintendent to support and not surprise too. So. Any questions, thoughts, concerns about that?
Nope.
Okay. So now we'll talk about board agenda agreements. And some of this is, is an agreement, some of it isn't. So let's, let's kind of go through this. So the board president, how far ahead of the meeting do you meet with the superintendent to review and approve the draft agenda?
Currently, it's the Thursday before the meeting.
And the meeting is on Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Is that sufficient for everyone?
I think it's something that we should probably talk about in one of the near future meetings, if that's going to be enough time. Right now, Dennis has agreed to send out a draft just agenda. Not the details of everything, but just a draft agenda the Thursday before that Thursday.
Yep.
Thursday or Friday, Friday, with the Friday report before that.
Okay.
So there's a full week and couple of days for the board members to see what's coming up on the agenda in case they have questions or want to educate themselves on a particular subject. So, so that the details aren't available, but that draft is.
Okay. That's great, because then you have a sense of what's coming. As opposed to just that Thursday before the meeting. That's a quick turnaround.
It is.
I was going to say, you have a board meeting and then a week later or?
Not a week, like four days.
Week and four days, yeah.
So four days, Thursday to Tuesdays.
Yeah, you.
I mean, I could say that's, yeah, I, I'm okay with that from my end, because I'm not doing the, all the legwork, but from a.
So my leg, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
My question is, okay, so we post a draft, I mean, you guys want a draft on Friday, but I print out, I post on Fridays.
You're not posting anything. I'm just sharing with them the outline of the agenda, but you would still only post as you currently are. I'm just sharing the agenda framework with them, so they have just an idea of what those main topics are.
And you're sharing that with all of us versus just?
Friday report.
Yep, weekly report.
That's going to, that's going to come out, say, for the August.
Oh, that'll be the first time.
You'll have 10 days to know what's going to be on the action items, information.
I have not seen that in six months.
You, you won't get the details in there, but if there's anything in there that you want the details and that gives the board members the opportunity, they got, you know, a whole entire week to ask questions in the event that we need to make changes, push it or whatever.
So I'm going to add that little piece to your regular communication around the Friday weekly update. That way we'll know, that you'll know that that's what you've agreed to for, for now. And then you can see how that works and decide if you need to move things backward or whatever. So, so the Thursday before the meeting, you meet.
Yes.
Friday before the meeting.
Friday before that meeting.
Yes.
So yeah, 10 days before the meeting meeting.
And then Friday after is when it, everything goes public.
Yeah, so we'll meet on Thursday, then that next day is when the agenda will be posted. In 99% of the cases, yeah. I only say that because.
Are you following that?
Who knows? So 10 days before, I'll just send out a draft that doesn't require any work from you. But then Keith and I will meet Thursday before the meeting and then you'll post Friday, just like we have today. Yep. So your process will change. And then anyone who would like to meet, I'd be welcome to set a standing time the week before a board meeting, so that you can come in every Thursday at 10, if you want, whatever that is, to talk through the agenda as well, if anyone wants to sit and have an.
So you, you saw through, I, I might have been the only board member that did that a couple of times with Jamie. Was that, and I think Dwayne too, was that, and I think maybe Luciano, like, was that useful, you felt, in your end? Because that's like taking up some meeting time from all of you. But for me, as a board member, it helped educate me, it helped like prepare me, I think, better for the meeting. But I also, and it wasn't very long. It was like a 20 or 30 minute meeting. But again, like, was that useful in your experience with like having an EA meeting before with the board members, or is that just taking up?
It's very helpful. We were in the middle of a, of an adoption, so that was helpful. When people came in and we were able to, to talk about that, where we were, what was going on in that. I, I liked it. It helped, it helped with what we were currently doing in my department.
Hopefully the, the outline will help the board member decide if they, if they want to have that meeting. She have ample time to kind of look at it and decide, okay, this is pretty normal stuff. I don't have any questions. Don't need to, to meet. So that's kind of the idea of getting that outline is so you know if you need to sit and who you need to sit with, right? If it's an HR action, perhaps you want to sit down with Luciano and talk to him and find out what are the laws in Arizona about that.
I just wonder like, because four of us are new. And actually, just so you know, Julie, like Jeff, David, and I, we did not sit through the goal setting last year, because we just got in on January. So this is new for all of us.
Right.
But for me, like even some of the emails that like you responded to Dennis, like I wonder, like from board members, like is it more return on investment and make more sense if, to have a standing meeting as a board member? Because I've been educated when I asked those questions and I did it like the Monday before, Tuesday was the meeting. So then we had the full agenda posted. It was 30 minutes, but I was like, what about this? And then Jamie was like, well, this is how it works in public education. I'm like, oh, okay. So to me, it actually, instead of me sending like questions all the time, I saved them unless it was an emergency for that moment and it seemed to work better. And I felt to, I felt like I, I got to know some of the EA group better, so.
Well, and I think in general, most boards just say, if that's something you feel like you need to have as a board member and the superintendent's willing to do it, go ahead and schedule it. Not everybody wants to do it, has the time to do it. So it just, you know, I think you, probably you can have a conversation with each of them to see what they want to do.
Absolutely.
You know, individually.
Open, yeah, it's beneficial to me if it answers questions. I think, as you said, it's a good relationship builder as well, just to sit down across the table one-on-one and be able to have that dialogue. So whatever makes you feel equipped and informed is, I think, the, the best thing to do. So whatever that looks like, reach individual person, we want to make that happen.
And for August, just so I know, was that meeting pushed another week? Is it the 19th or is it really the second Tuesday?
It's the 13th, correct?
13th.
A Wednesday, right?
Yes.
Yep.
So originally it was the 12th that we moved it to.
We, we don't have a clerk or a vice president, so that we have to elect one. I'm not going to be here on the 12th. I'll be back that night. So we don't have a, an officer, so 13th Wednesday, we'll be here and then we can elect a clerk.
So that, instead of the second Tuesday, the 12th, they're just moving it the next day?
Yes.
Okay. Consent agenda. Do you use one?
Yes.
Yes. So if a board member wants to pull something from consent to allow for discussion, the board will notify the superintendent how far in advance?
As many days, I mean.
Well, if it's posted on Friday, you want to know Monday morning?
Monday would be nice. Yeah, so there's some time in case there's research necessary. Gives us an opportunity to find out as much information as possible. So, yeah, Monday would be great.
Okay.
Or 24 hours, I guess, is roughly what that would be.
Yeah, 24 hours, yeah. No later than 24 hours. Yes.
One days.
And when you, is this something that happens? Do you pull stuff from consent? Is that?
Yeah, it has happened in my six months here.
Okay. And then you have a process. Where does it go once it's pulled?
It was talked about in the meeting.
No, I know that, but it was it, you approved the consent agenda.
We approved the consent agenda and then discussed the items.
That pulled item. Okay.
So it follows the consent agenda.
Okay.
And sometimes, Julie, it was just for even a positive recognition of what we're sitting in.
Right. Exactly.
That's where we accept all of our grants are sitting in. Oh, this is really cool. We should, we should announce this out loud.
Yes, yes. We used to do that in PB. We'd put all of our bond projects under consent. And board members would, a, a board member would keep pulling them out. And I was like, higher, let's not pull them out. Let's just put them out. They're always going to sit there so we can say thank you to our community. So, yeah. That's a, yeah, that's a great thing to think about. Okay, next slide. So these are some agreements around future agenda items. The board president and superintendent work together to create the board agendas. All board members are afforded the opportunity to request agenda items. Do you have a request for future agenda items on your agenda?
Yes.
Not all districts do, so. And I didn't, I forgot to include it, but we do have a rubric, an agenda rubric, just so board members can look and see. Like, does this actually belong on an agenda or?
Oh, I like that.
So I'll send that to you and you can provide it to the board.
Thank you.
So so we know that they're made during the meeting and they're tracked by the board secretary, I'm assuming? Or?
Usually, yeah.
Superintendent?
Yeah, usually I think the superintendent would be the one that tracks those to make sure that we have that conversation down the road.
Okay.
So, but it's not just during the, item seven on the agenda, if a board member has a request.
They can do it in between as well?
Yes.
Okay. And then how, what's that process? Like just request to the superintendent? Okay.
Myself and the superintendent, whichever.
Between meetings. Okay.
So I, I like this piece. Are, are we on bullet two?
We can be on whatever bullet you want to be on there, Cory. So that, when requesting agenda items?
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's how the rubric, I think, will also be helpful. But go ahead.
Yeah, no, I just, I think because there's been a lot of, none of the information shared has, I feel, has been bad. I just, like, when thinking about who we're serving and how to best use our time in the board meeting, I think there's been some opportunities where we have had some agenda items that have maybe really taken up a lot of time in there. And we have families and kids that are here. And so to me, I'm just, how do we best use, and maybe that agenda rubric helps. But some of the questions is like the piece of what is board work versus like administrative? And what are some things that can be done in an email or what could be done in like, I have a question and we can answer that, because it's about the mat adoption, but like maybe no one else like wants to hear about that. I don't know, but I, those are just some things that I know we're all kind of new to this, but to really, and maybe these board members, board meetings have been four hours in the past, but I don't think they have been. And we've had a couple of those. That's, I just want to, I want to serve our district the best way we can. And so how can we take some things out that we can discuss as a board, or that's more administrative versus like what it says here?
Well, I think in the, what other boards have done is if there's a request for a future agenda item and the superintendent thinks, boy, you know, I handle that some other way, right? Maybe it's something that needs to be a study session item, or maybe it's something that could be handled in the weekly report. Then the superintendent could get in touch with that board member and say, hey, this is what I'm thinking about that thing that you requested. Is that suitable for you? If it's not, tell me what you want to know, so that I can make sure that I'm prepared. So if that makes.
That makes perfect sense.
Okay. So, and that is that if there's concern about timeliness or relevancy, the superintendent, you know, you could also have it come before the board for a vote. Do we talk about this during the meeting? I don't recommend that, because that just creates contention that's not necessary. So just a conversation that the superintendent has with the board member and go from there. Okay. Anything else about future agenda items? Okay. Now, next slide is board member preparation. So if you have questions about the agenda items, you're going to, based on what we've talked about from consent agenda, they're going to call the superintendent at least 24 hours before the meeting. Okay. And then you'll come to the board meeting prepared to discuss items on the agenda. You'll notify the superintendent before the meeting about positive and negative comments from the community on specific items. And then you'll give the superintendent time to research the clarifying questions about the agenda. Any questions, thoughts, concerns about that?
I'd just say, try not to wait till the 24 hour mark to ask to have something pulled from the agenda, because sometimes if a perspective is brought up, that may change the agenda and move it out of it without having to pull it. We don't have the time to do that. So in the morning, this might be a good point to just pull it out, so we don't have to pull it out during the meeting. It's not the end of the world, but.
Yeah. It, it also creates a little bit of, how do we do this? And the public doesn't know what's going on and, yeah.
That way, if it's something that's, that Dennis feels should be a standalone informational or action item, then he can create that. Still meeting the 24 hour notice.
And he probably wouldn't mind an email on Saturday saying, hey, I, I, this is something I.
Sure.
Don't, you don't have to wait till Monday.
The more time I get, the better.
The better. And then he's going to be emailing one of these people and saying. Okay. So let's go to the next one. During the meeting, so the board president will ensure that one person speaks at a time and each member has an equal opportunity to participate. You will model the behaviors expected of students, staff and community members. Procedures for public comment are clear and available at the meeting site. And I'm assuming you have your cards and to sign up for a call to the public and all that. Okay.
Are we going to do? Are we going to do, I know when I used to do Call to the Public so often, there was like a timer that reminded me of, I don't think we've done that recently, have we?
No.
No?
No. So that's at the discretion of the president. And I think if the public's going to take the time to come up and want to talk to us, that we should hear them. As long as they're not talking in circles or repeating the same thing over and over again, and even without the timer, I think people have stuck right two or three minutes. But if they have, somebody has four or five minutes of useful information to provide, I think we owe it to them to hear them out.
What though are we going to do? Because this can really open up. We don't have any like guidelines. If someone comes and says, I have something very important, and they go for 15 minutes, and because we don't have like a standing rule or norm, how is that going to be addressed? Are you going to take the authority to like cut them off? Or like what?
So the, the policy's three minutes.
Does it state that still on the paper? Do you know, like, that they fill out?
Yeah. So none of that's been removed. So we're still standing by the three minutes. Just if somebody goes beyond that, I'm not going to cut them off.
Mid-sentence.
Right.
So it used to, it just had, it didn't, it went down from three minutes and it didn't have like a buzzer, like you're done, but
That's the discretion of the president.
But But there's no timer now.
Keep the timer. Well, so
The board president has the discretion.
So I'm going to just give you a little bit of information that is, there is a case in Florida. It was Moms for Liberty against Brevard County schools. And the Moms for Liberty actually won the case because the president was giving more time to this person, the three minutes here, five minutes there. So we've really been talking about, you've got to be consistent. If you say a policy is three minutes, it should be three minutes.
That's where, yeah.
But you can, you can also say it's five. You just have to decide, everybody has to be treated the same from a legal perspective. And it's not about not wanting to hear them, right? If they go over three minutes, then you can say something along, as board president, oh, Mrs. Blah blah blah, you know, our superintendent will be in touch with you to hear the rest of the information that you wanted to share. Or you, so there's other ways you can do it. But I would be really careful about discretion and policy. If your policy says three minutes, then you really should only get three minutes.
Now, was that case because they were stopped at three minutes, but then the other people were allowed five?
They were, it was, it was dependent on who the president was. And sometime, one meeting, the president would do it one way. Next meeting, the same president would do it differently. So it just, there wasn't consistency. And they were cited for violating their, whatever their open meeting laws called, I don't know.
But again, was it because they were being stopped? Because he's not stopping anybody, whether they talked too much.
They were allowing some people to go longer and stopping other people.
Well, that's where the problem, and he's not doing that.
Yeah.
He's allowing them to speak.
He's saying that's discretion.
If somebody's providing valuable information for five, 10 minutes, I'll let them speak. If they go back to beginning their speech just to continue repeating themselves, I'll ask them to please summarize, close your, what you have to say. Because if they're repeating themselves, I just want to know, you're repeating yourself, please
Yeah.
close up. And I think that would cover us with that because I'm not stopping anybody from speaking, providing new information.
I guess we're the, just because of my HR background, the legal piece and anyone else can speak of, is that piece, is that, when it starts to get gray, and even if the intention was, you know, you stopped someone at 15 minutes because it was very clear to all of us that they were talking in circles, but then they come back and say, you cut me off, but you didn't cut this person off, that it just becomes that gray area. And I'm guessing that's what was happening. There was no consistency and because our policy
It wasn't about who was being shut down or the perspective that was being shut down. It was just that it wasn't consistent across the board.
Okay.
So that's something for you all to think about. I would definitely talk with your attorney about that and see. Because if, I mean, one of the things that I always say to boards, if you have something in policy and you are not following your policy, why would a staff member or a student think they have to follow?
The policy also says that the extended time is at the discretion of the president.
Okay. If it explicitly says that, then I think you're covered. But I would definitely talk with your attorney about it.
And the idea is to allow people, and if somebody's talking in circles, just have to let them know, hey, you know, you're talking, you're repeating yourself. We want to hear you out.
Right. The thing to think about, right, is that you, what's talking in circles to you might feel like new information to somebody else. So if, I'm just giving you
Understand.
my professional advice.
I get it. I get it.
And I really want you to talk to your attorney about it. Because I think that's, that's where the rubber hits the road, meets the road. So.
Got a question?
Yes.
Only the board president will respond to public comment during the meeting. The president has given all of us opportunity to respond to the public, which none of us really have. Is that something that we, as our board, you're the only one that responds? Or are you giving opportunity for anybody to respond?
Well, we're not supposed to respond in all, but my understanding, and I could be totally wrong, is that if someone is, what are the two things that they should not be talking about? Like allegations that are unfounded and
Accusations and clarifications.
Yeah. So if, for some reason, Keith missed that, let's say. And as, my understanding is that like a fellow board member can stop that person saying, hey, you're violating, like you're, you know, making accusations. If that is fair, but if that's not what we should.
So, open meeting law says that you can respond to personal attacks, that board members can respond to personal attacks by members of the public at Call to the Public. The other thing that you, but you can't do that until Call to the Public is over.
Okay.
Okay.
So you gotta wait for everybody that's listed to finish, not that one person to finish.
Finish, not that one person to finish. Everybody has to finish.
They probably did that intentionally. So somebody's sitting at the mic to continue the argument.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, good point.
But it's a good idea to do it that way.
I mean, it came out of Litchfield a couple of years ago because a board member was, had made signs. Not true, true, as people were talking during Call to the Public.
Oh, no.
And the Attorney General had an opinion saying, you can't do that.
That's communication.
That's, that is communication. So responding to personal attacks, individual board members can do at the conclusion of Call to the Public.
But can Keith, when it's personal attacks or whatever, he could shut that down as the president? Right?
You can't shut down content, right? You can, you can, you can place restrictions on time and manner.
You can remind people that this is a place to provide information, not personal attacks.
Yeah.
You're asking to please avoid
I'm just thinking if someone comes in and says, Mr. Timothy Thompson, whatever, you know, is like this teacher, and then it starts to be said, but one, it's unfounded, we don't know, to be able to like
I mean, I think your attorney would say you can't shut that down.
Free speech.
Yeah. And if you're coming to law conference, there'll be a lot of information on constitutional law and its impact. And that's one of the things our keynote's going to be talking about.
Okay.
Is free speech as it relates to Call to the Public.
And clarification, I think each board member should be able to ask for clarification. If somebody, just on simplistic, right, somebody uses an acronym and you don't know what it is. I may know what it is. Jeff may not. Clarification, right? What is, what is that acronym? What is that? They can explain what that is for clarification.
Talking in code.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I'd be careful. Maybe when the person's done, you know, you could say for those of you who don't know, you know, PPP is, you know, whatever it is.
Personal protection.
Yeah. I don't
PPE.
PPE. That was PPE. Yeah. So. But in general, you should let them speak. The other thing that board president can do is direct this, the administration to follow up.
Right. We've done that.
So that, that's appropriate to do as well.
So basically, if our super is talking about a specific program on a board meeting, you cannot ask him questions or make positive comments about it. You must have an agenda on it so that other board members can talk about it.
Yep. So yes, if the, during superintendent comments, if the superintendent says, oh, they've got this great new program that we're starting, that's not an invitation to ask questions. That is just an information item. If you want to talk about the program and you want them to ask questions, put it on the agenda as an item for discussion.
Informational is an item for discussion though, right?
Yes. But the superintendent board comments are meant for current events, not stuff that you're going to have conversation.
Superintendent's report.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
If it was part of the superintendent's report, you're not supposed to be asking questions. So we always just tell people, if you think it's something, even if it's a current event, but you think it's something people are going to have questions on, put it on the agenda. So you can
But if it's in the report, it's on the agenda.
Well, not the, so do you, what does your agenda normally look like? Do you have superintendent board member comments?
We have a superintendent's report section.
Information, reports, Call to the Public.
Okay.
Consent and action.
So those, that superintendent report is intended to be a current events only report. It's intended to be one-way communication, not two-way communication. It is intended to inform the public of things that are going on. For example, you know, our mariachi group at this school was invited to perform at XYZ. We're so proud of them. But it's not intended to have conversation around them.
The reports, but the information items are.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Yep. Now, if there's something, you, some districts do it differently. Some, some districts do superintendent report and they list every single thing that they're going to talk about individually. If you do that, you can ask questions about it.
It's listed.
Because it's written down.
Because it's written down.
Okay.
But it's listed in there on the
The superintendent's report and it's, they're going to, he's going to inform us about A, B, C, D, E.
Donation.
We itemize it. That's why, that's why I kept that.
Yes.
It's listed. Everybody knows we're going to have it.
If it's itemized, questions are fine.
Yeah, we don't have just reports.
The public is also seeing that itemized list on the agenda. That's what makes it fair. Yes.
You do it differently than most.
More transparent.
You're more transparent. There you go. You give more opportunities for conversation.
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, the next one is superintendent will provide clarifying information to board questions. Issues, not people, will be discussed during meetings. Members will listen respectfully to each other and staff. Try really hard not to have those side conversations. They're very distracting. And people think that you're talking about something that you're not talking about.
I think we do a really good job with that.
Yeah, we do a really good job of having no sidebar conversations.
That is very, we do that very well. So write that down.
Gold star. There's a gold star somewhere.
It all starts, and Lisa will get the speech from Monica. She sits back there with the Wolfleball bat.
The only other thing I would say about that is just be careful about your cell phones.
Yeah.
Because it hasn't happened yet, but I think attorneys are fully expecting cell phones to become part of the public record if they're being used during anything. Okay, so that's just something
Well, aren't they already? Like if a board member, I mean, if someone
No one's personal cellphone has ever, they haven't
Surrendered it?
Surrendered it yet. Or I've been asked to.
If you get a, if you get a public records request, they will ask you for all your communication to include texts, personal emails, emails.
Yeah, I know. I get opposed all the time at work. So they
And then you, it's up to you and your integrity to provide that information.
Yeah.
At the moment, they can't take your phone and download your texts.
They haven't yet. So.
If you, if you're using your phone, was what she's saying at the diocese, then an attorney might be able to give you official text messages. Right now, it's at your discretion.
Yeah. And I always said, if they want my phone so they can see the argument that's happening between my kids and me.
Yeah.
If they have suggestions, I'm all for it. Whatever they think will work.
It's for you to My only request is for as long as you have my phone, you answer every call and text.
Okay. Monitor for compliance with open meeting law. That's everyone's responsibility, not just the superintendent, or the board president, or the board secretary. So if you think you need to use porno border to get the meeting back on track, if you think you're drifting off into a topic that is not actually agendized.
Agenda.
Agenda, agendenized, not on the agenda. Yeah. And this happens a lot. Like, I use, always use the example of, you know, the field trip. Okay, what about the buses? What, you know, what's the condition of the buses? And you start getting into a discussion about the bus fleet, it is, it's not on the agenda at all.
Rabbit trails.
But, you know, you kind of extrapolate.
I know. Our transportation guy is, he's on it. We will not ask any questions from him.
And then just, you know, making sure that you, that you're moving discussion forward as you're in the meetings. After the meeting, board members and staff will support, or at least not undermine, the decision of the board. And that's not saying that if you voted, if you were in the minority and voted no, that you can't ever say anything about it. That's, that's not what that means. What it means is, if people ask you about it, and I've been in the minority before, and I have said, you heard the reasons that I voted the way I voted. That is not how the board voted, you know, and that we're, we are moving forward in that direction. And now my job is just to monitor the progress, see what's happening, and see what the result of that decision is. So it's, it's not to say that you can't own the fact that you don't think this is a good idea. But it is for you to say, the whole, this is a democracy and we're going to move forward together and, and we'll do some evaluation around it. So. Board members and staff will abide by the confidentiality laws of executive sessions and remembering that those are, there is no spousal privilege for that. It is only the people who are in the room at the time of the executive session. Superintendent ensures that all documents, records, reports, processed and maintained in accordance with laws, regulations, policies. So you guys are done after the meeting. She's just getting started. Right? Because there's all sorts of things that have to happen as follow-up. Any questions about that?
Nope.
Okay. Site visits. Do you have policy around site visits? If, if you, if there's a new shiny program at some elementary school and you want to go see it as a board member, what does that look like?
The only thing I'm aware of is just a notification that, hey, I'm going to head here. Because if there's more than, if there's three or more, then we need to be aware of that as well.
Two or more, yeah.
Yeah. So just so there's communication about that. But that's the only thing I'm aware of. It's just to let the superintendent know so that we can be aware.
Okay. So check with the superintendent about the best time to visit. You know, the superintendent may have information about that particular school that today's not the day. Today's field day. And no one is going to be around to show you what's going on.
Is it good for both then? Because the superintendent might say yes, and principal might say I'm busy?
Well, I think
Or other way around.
My guess is the superintendent might say
I would reach out to the principal.
Yeah, would reach out to the principal.
Yeah. Because that's what I've done. I just, I was always going directly straight to the principal and saying, do you, you know, is this time good for you?
Well, that's up to you all, how you want to do that. So maybe now's the time to have discussion about that.
I don't necessarily mind that. Just us knowing where they are in case we need to know, or in case there's multiple people at that one site would be good to know. But me getting in the middle of coordinating time and date seems a little bit unnecessary.
But like a CC for you?
Yeah.
Just inform.
Hey, I'm going to be here this week. Okay, cool. Thanks for letting me know. You know, there may be times where it's like, oh, my calendar's going to afford me the opportunity. If you don't mind, I'll join you, you know, to be able to do some of that together as part of a relationship building piece too, for sure.
Yeah. Okay. Great.
Would it be okay also if I, if I would like the assistant superintendents to go?
Yeah, absolutely.
Would that be okay?
Yep.
Go to the chain of command and say, hey, we, you might be busy or whatever.
Sure. Absolutely. Yeah, I don't, you can coordinate that with anyone. I'm totally okay with that as long as Mayor Monica knows, just so we have an idea of what's happening. Yeah, whoever you want to make that tour with, I'm totally fine with that.
Thank you.
Okay. If you have children in the district, you know, you want to make sure that you're clear that you're there as a parent, not a board member, especially if you're addressing an issue that is happening with your child. That's where I was just, I sent my husband and stayed out of it. The board member observes an issue on campus that needs follow-up, that should go to the superintendent. So if you see, oh, this reminds me, I, when I got to work today at seven, one of our water lines, one of our sprinklers was broken and it's just spewing water all over one of the streets next to our building. I took a picture of it and I thought, oh, I'm going to have to let our acting executive director know this is happening. I didn't, but I will as soon as I leave here.
It's already flooded.
It's already flooded.
No one's there today. I don't think I do need to
We have that on record.
I love it. Exactly. Anyway, but if you see something like that, the best thing is to just Anyway, but if you see something like that, the best thing is to just contact the superintendent and then they'll contact whoever they need to do, whatever they need to do to fix it. Okay. And then the last slide, as far as this goes, is the board and community communications. So you are ambassadors for the district and you want to emphasize the positive things that happen, because if you don't, no one does. That's a lesson that we learn, right? You want to attend, if you're attending community meetings, you should let the superintendent's office know so that if there is a forum there, that a soft posting can be done to make sure. Any complaints received from the staff or community should be directed through the appropriate chain of command, and that's those KE policies. The board is the last stop in the complaint process. That doesn't mean that you can't give direction on how to get things resolved and you can't listen to what they're saying, but I wouldn't get involved in any way, so. And we've talked about that before. We, individual board members, have no authority to solve any problems and you are absolutely, it is appropriate for you to be in touch with the superintendent to say, hey, I directed this parent here, I'm wondering what's going on. And have the superintendent let you know. Okay? Anything there we need to add or delete or?
Nope.
Okay. So let's go back to, what are we calling this? Not, it's not agreements, unless it is agreements. So let's go back to that list. Where did I put that?
Guidelines or understanding come to mind for me.
Guidelines or understanding?
I don't even have the guidelines.
I like guidelines.
Guidelines okay with everybody?
I like commitments more than guidelines, but I am a guideline person by nature, so I like more guideline-based rules. But to me, I think it's a, it's a expectation of board members that we act differently than other community members. So to me, I think it's more than just an understanding and it's a commitment to, not a commitment to always agree with each other, but a commitment to uphold these. So that's why I think it's a stronger word, but I am not dying on that hill, so if everyone likes guidelines, I'm fine with it too.
How do people feel about commitment?
I don't have a problem with commitment.
It'll make a difference to me. It's not an agreement.
Okay. Let's make it commitments then. Okay. So now, what I do is I take all of this information we've talked about and I create a document for you and I will send it to both of you. And then you have documented communication protocols that when you get new board members, you can just hand it to them and say, this is how we do things around here. So that's one less thing to talk about, one more thing that they can read.
And should I just mail everyone a copy of that? We didn't talk about that.
What is the mailing?
No, I just said, we talked about email.
Yes, yes.
We talked about text, phone, and I was like, I'm just gonna mail everyone. Put a stamp on it, send it out.
You should probably let me know to watch my mailbox.
Okay, so we are on to district goals. Do we need a break or do we want to keep going?
I'm okay.
You guys are?
Yep, I'm good.
I'm good to keep going, yeah. Okay. So these were the goals that a year ago, I was here, we helped develop, the board developed these goals. And what I thought, what Mr. Ponder could do is just kind of give, if there's an update, if there's information about this goal or one of your assistants, to see where it's at. Because some of these, sometimes you make these goals and then you need to carry them over.
Yeah.
Depending on how far you've gotten. So I just, I'm gonna hand it to you.
So goal one, improve math student achievement scores as measured by Galileo and/or AASA by increasing the number of students in the highly proficient category and decreasing the number of students in the minimally proficient category. So Dwayne, if I may ask you to speak on that, since that is a piece that you live in.
Sure. I wasn't sure if you wanted to still focus on math specifically or if you wanted to focus on just the increase of student achievement. So that'd be my first question, because that second word is math.
Do you want to just quickly update on how we did in that, in terms of our math scores? Just provide an update from 24, 25, if we were able to increase HP?
Different grades did different things. We had, I worked with, actually, middle school. In middle school, actually, we saw a little bit of an increase for that. Elementary was some up, some down. And so that's how that played out.
With the math, the new curriculum, from your expertise, do you feel like it's where we were down, that this new curriculum is addressing those gaps? Or we're too early to tell? Or I don't know if there's enough data as to like where the gaps really were?
Well, first of all, the curriculum is not out yet. I mean, it's coming, it gets delivered. So we haven't, we haven't, there's no testing in our district, what it's gonna do. We bought it with the full confidence that it will increase all of the areas that we need increased on, okay? So when it comes to math and student achievement, we're looking forward to just increase the whole, all students, okay? There's another part in there and I think that's, I think that's where we are with that.
So it sounds like then you evaluated, researched, examined, discussed, and adopted?
We did.
Okay. So that one's done, that key performance indicator. And was there professional development in math this course?
Yes, there was. And so, yes, we have a emphasis in that as well.
And you don't have your final double A S A numbers yet, right?
Yes, we do.
Oh, you do.
We have everything, well, they're preliminary.
Yeah.
Yeah, everything's just preliminary until November 1st.
Yeah. So that first goal, in terms of increasing in numbers and highly proficient and decreasing, you might need to wait till November to see whether you were able to do that.
Sure. We, yes, we could wait. I think, I think if you just, I think the goal would read very nicely, would just take the math out for right now, so we can also have ELA and math going on. We don't, we won't have the use of Galileo. That's a part that I have to get to, is Galileo will not be here unless it's only used for science. It will be our internal benchmarks from our curriculum. So I ready is our math curriculum. And as we shared it with you, they have an internal benchmarking system already built in. That's what we'll be using. In our ELA, our English language arts, we'll be using their internal benchmarking system. And so it just, all those benchmarking systems just replace that Galileo. That's what that does.
Okay.
So, but Galileo would not be the correct term to use for this upcoming year. The other thing, part that I would point out is that we, of course, we want to increase the number of students in the highly proficient category, but I would also include proficient as well. Because proficient is a category and highly proficient is a category. We want both numbers to increase. So we want all students who are impartially proficient to move up to proficiency. We want to see that increase and we would love for it to see an increase in highly proficient.
And to me, that just seems like you're reframing it in a positive way, instead of saying decreasing, like those, you're just rewarding it to say that you want more, we want to see more in the provision, like needs, right?
Yes, and we're gonna, we want to keep that decrease in the number of students in minimally proficient. We want to keep that phrasing in there. So what are you doing? You're working on the entire system at this. We need to decrease the number of students in minimally proficient and at the same time, we need to increase the number of students in proficiency and highly proficient.
So we reviewing?
Works on the whole system.
We reviewing our goals from last year or establishing next years?
He's reviewing.
He's doing both right now.
I'm doing both. Just kind of where we are.
Okay. I'm just making sure.
Yes. And so I'm just showing what we, where we were and where that, where this one needs to go if you want something similar.
For next year.
Gotcha.
Okay. So it sounds like you probably, in November-ish, need to have on your board agenda, looking at these math scores as related to this goal, so that you have a data point. You told the community you're going to do that.
Well, in two-year suggestion, Dwayne, and maybe this is because the preliminary information is showing that there's a lot of opportunity in more than just math. So is that why your suggestion is maybe being more of like increasing scores altogether?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's why I did that. So that's up to the board if you want to take on more than that. And I'm sorry, I didn't know, did you want to just review what we did last year?
Well, right now, I'm thinking we'll review what we did last year, then we'll talk about what we're gonna do for next year.
Okay.
But this gives us segue right into that, so.
Okay, because yes, all of that was, yes, we accomplished all of those, all those things. Even some, even our minimally proficient, actually, when we got better in some places too. I wish I could just say, oh yeah, every single school, all 19 schools, you know, all increasing. It's not that easy as a large district.
Right, well, so, yeah, right, you need to look at, like, the big numbers and then what's each site doing and.
Yeah.
Data can drive you insane. Yeah, okay, great. Then goal two.
So goal two is provide a safe, modern learning environment that meets the needs of every student. And those key performance indicators were seek revenue sources and develop plans to utilize those sources in school year 24, 25, and then evaluate the facility and educational needs of students and exceptional student service programs in school year 24, 25. So seeking revenue sources, one of those was a bond and that didn't pass, so we weren't able to capitalize on that. So we're continuing to explore if that's another possibility as we move forward and then looking at other revenue sources, both ones we currently have, and then looking at maybe some alternative ways that we can look at some of that, some of that growth or the opportunities to improve those, those learning environments. And evaluate facility and educational needs of students and exceptional student services programs. So we spent some time on that. We do know that many of our schools were built before 75, so there's a, there's a gap there in terms of what we have available for our exceptional students and the ability to access restaurants close to their learning space, the ability to have a sentry room that's located in close proximity to their current space. And then we also just don't have enough space for the kids, especially out east. We're growing out east, whether it's gen ed or special ed or ESS, but we do have a situation where we have to look at students with special needs that can't attend their neighborhood school because we just don't have room, space, or a program for them there. So that's another thing that we're still looking at.
So this will be continued into next year?
If that's what they choose, then yes, it's certainly not completed.
Okay. Now, goal three.
So goal three is increase parent and community engagement by 5% in school year 24, 25 as measured by event attendance and community visibility data. The KPI for that, develop mechanisms to measure parent engagement, including but not limited to surveys, registrations, and web analytics, and then create and implement a plan to increase Yuma One presence at community events. Would you be able to speak to that?
Yeah, I would say that Christine and her team are phenomenal. And so they've done a lot to increase their social media presence, press releases, engaging the community more, the Tommas and Tunes festivals, those large events, really connected with all the stakeholders. But I wanted to ask the board, I mean, how do you feel when you think about District One, the branding, the marketing over the last year? Do you feel like our presence has increased, given what our goals were last year? Have you heard more about our district, the different programs? What's your take when you think about some of those goals and metrics that we had?
So as a new board member and just as a citizen of Yuma, I can say I've seen a whole lot more. I like the idea that you're out there in those community events. We were talking with, I was talking with the principals over on the Northland schools and how their numbers were so low in attendance that we need to be able to build them up. We need to be able to give the rest of Yuma a reason to go to those schools. I mean, like, look at OC Johnson, their success rate, but yet that's not really something that the public knows about. They just know that that's an old Northland school and I don't want to go there. So we need to be able to highlight those schools and really give them the reason of why. Those are the good schools, you know, the little nuggets of information of, but from what I've seen, I think that they're doing a good job so far. Because I have noticed that difference in, you know, community service, being out in social media, doing those things. I am seeing a lot more of that on my side.
And one thing that Christine and her team are working on is how do we have themes throughout the year? So like, in the month of August, we're gonna focus on back to school, we're gonna focus on a certain program. How do we highlight academics across the district for one week? How do we highlight our after-school programs, athletics, project-based learning throughout the district? So coming up with more uniform things throughout the district so you can see what has become grown to, what has OC Johnson do?
Right.
They're all the same kind of lineup programs that are district-wide.
Yeah. There was a comment by, by one of the teachers that doesn't have a marquee sign, that that's what she thought was the only way to be noticed. And it's really not. The only people that's gonna see that marquee sign are the people that drive by it, but the rest of the community is not gonna see anything. And that, I asked her, I go, what's your social media presence? And she said they really didn't have one. And so it's good to see that Christine's, you know, taking the helmet that and doing that to be able to highlight these schools, to let them know, you know, like, I'm gonna go back to OC again, that they have a food pantry. You know, and the neighborhood food pantry, how many people know about that and actually can utilize that? You know, those, those things are really cool that they, that they do that, but how does the public know about that? So.
And for those schools that might not have the talent at their site, Christine and their team, they can go out there and film videos and post things and if they want something to be trained on, how do you use Canva? How do you use editing system? We have the expertise and has to go out there and provide that for them.
Right, right. No, I like what I see.
I get the paper every day. I'm old-fashioned, so I like that paper reading. One thing that I see is a lot of positive, like just talking about OC Johnson's pantry and school supplies that had been out there, not only on KYMA, but in the paper, letting people know, specifically the, providing the breakfast and the lunches for our students up until July 18th, and then that wonderful meal pack that is provided for them, students for the weekend. So all that has been, you know, with PSAs, with our media and old-fashioned senior citizen newspapers.
It's good to have diverse ways.
I get it too, but just via, via online. Yalun has it via phone.
I pass it on, so. But I just feel that there's been a lot of positive stuff for our district. Again, I'd just like to hear the good news of what our district does for our students and our community. Thank you.
I'd like to see how we can highlight those Northland schools a little bit more because we had a redistricting conversation going on. And in those neighborhoods, they had this forethought that, well, those schools are terrible. And really, they're not. You know, so how do we change that mindset? And it's gotta be through communication. It's, I don't know if they, having open houses, having some sort of a, hey, come look at us and actually have a live interaction going on. I don't know what we could do about that. To truly, you know, turn the mindset around that those schools actually are hidden gems. Their ratio, student-to-teacher ratio is lower, so it'll kind of alleviate maybe that, the east side of town. I'd like to somehow try to see what we can do to help them. You know, it seems like that's the, the, I don't want to call it problem child, but that seems like that's where our weakness is or that's where our ache is at, is over on that end, that people aren't really wanting to go there. They're calling them problem schools, they're calling them old schools, which all of our schools are old schools. But how do we change that mindset? How do we get them to be interested in, I mean, because the teachers there are amazing teachers. And some of those teachers in those Northland schools are probably better than the teachers over on the other end if you put them head to head. How do you get that mindset that, you know, just because I go to Carver, it's not gonna be a bad experience, it's actually gonna be an excellent experience, especially for the ESS kids? You know, they're, they're set. They're ready to go for the specially, special needs kids. And how do we get that mindset, you know, for the public to be able to understand that, rather than having this facade thought?
So over the last year, we've received reports on email opens, the students' interface with the parents, social media, and all of those statistics have come back on some pretty and all of those statistics have come back on some pretty impressive increases in emails sent out, number percentage opened, parents opening, what is it, the?
Parent square.
Parent square, right, parent square.
Website traffic.
Yes, website traffic, and so there has been a lot of focus, and I think that goal has been at least exceeded far beyond what we thought. We said five percent, but I'm pretty sure it's double digits.
Yeah. We've seen a lot of data.
Right.
As a parent, it's it's it's, I have a parent and this is will be years eight of my kids being in the district. It's been a huge difference of just being a moment, every need, like, no matter what event I've gone to, I'm like, you're, or do you sleep? Whether it's a night event, whether it's a morning event, so clearly, and it's been at all, like, all the schools, not just some. And so, yeah, I've seen a huge difference, a huge, like, social media presence and sharing the good news, highlighting the things that we've done, keeping the community informed, and so it's just and as a board member, it's like really easy to just share, you know, and share and highlight, and like you're saying, like, there's a lot of wins, and there's a lot, every, and they say, like, what is it, I think psychologically, eleven good things for one bad. So you have one person say, public education sucks, you need like eleven to like get someone's mindset. So we're talking about changing mindsets, it's not just changing mindsets about our schools. The root of it is changing mindsets about public education. And so we have a duty to help do that. And it's great to be able to have a wonderful team like Christine, to be like, well, she already does it for us, I just get to share and be like, I got to go to that pantry, and it's wonderful, or I got to experience Angela, or whoever, you know? So I think they're doing a wonderful job, and I know that there's big issues to fill for Nate, since he's going to Carver, right?
Transitioning to be a teacher.
Right, at Carver, yeah, that's exciting. I'm glad that he's going to be there.
Just wanted to make a quick comment before I begin. I wanted to thank all of you for reaching out to our Spanish-speaking community. As you know, we all got together, Mr. Ponder, Mr. Costa Riz, and a lot of other people got together with Prado Estates and Sierra Pacific, when we had those meetings in Spanish. That was just wonderful, you know, just to see, and specifically when Cory did the mission statement, and she specifically wanted it to be translated, and I was allowed to do that. We had people, because when when you're up there, we're in a fishbowl, but at the same time, we're looking at expressions. And just to see how happy those Spanish-speaking people were to be able to understand what's going in the meeting and allowing us to speak in their language, get them actively participating in 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 the events, you know, that I suppose. I just wanted to mention that because I've got a lot of positive comments about that.
Thank you.
I mean, what, there's a lot of positives that we've just talked about, and I think you all should give yourselves a round of applause. And so exciting. Now, we're going to talk about twenty-five, twenty-six goals, and I think you know, we we preach this to school districts all the time, you've got to set those goals, you got to follow them, and then you got to decide what the next, once you've, once you've done stuff, you're not going backwards, right? We're staying where we are in terms of your web analytics and all of that. But what are we going to do next? What's the next thing we want to tackle? So I guess the discussion the board needs to have now, is there anything we want to carry forward from twenty-four, twenty-five?
Well, I think I think one that we need to carry forward is, well, we have two of them, I think, but number one and number two, and I think to exchanging it from math and expanding it. You know, I think that, I don't think it's too much to ask for, because I I tried to come up with some looking at the previous, and one of them was core academics to improve core academics. I don't know if putting a percentages on that is something that we can ever accurately calculate. I don't want to put a percentage at the nineteen schools across the board of five percent because.
Yeah. You need to do district-wide probably, just to account for those.
But, yeah, I don't think you can actually do that. I think the better metrics is looking at student progression out of, you know.
Those categories.
Those categories, and it's difficult when you have students coming from another district that is starting at the under-proficient level, and so your under-proficient may increase, but you may be seeing more students moving up that different category, moving up that that chain. So it always goes against everything that I believe that everything should be tangible.
Well, there is some some tangibility in that, right?
It's about like nail and jello to a tree. You've got it the first strike, and then it moves, right? I mean, it's just not going to work, right? It really isn't.
I like that, nail and jello to a tree. I'm taking that home with me.
It's an analogy that I've used forever, but it it really is, but I think that the district's approach to the math focus last year was absolutely appropriate, and I think that we're going to see fruit from that. I'm also wanting to lean on Dennis's, when he said that he wanted to look at programs that we have, what their initial intent and use was, and did they meet that? Was it, is there something else out there that we can use to help get us closer? So I think that core academic improvement and evaluation, and I'm kind of torn on that because I think that teachers, I don't I don't think the curriculum, and I'm not an educator, so those that have been in the classroom, help me out. I mean, I don't know if the curriculum provided is going to make students more proficient. I think it's the teachers, the resources they have, and the resources that that they can reach out to.
One tool, yeah.
Right, I mean, a math book is a math book, right? It's the teacher that makes that connection between the brain and the book.
Right.
It's not, you know, the the green book or the orange book, right? So I don't know if core academic improvement's focusing on resources for the teacher that, they're making that bridge. They're they're bridging the the curriculum to the child's brain.
Yeah, well, curriculum tells you what you need to teach. It doesn't tell you how to teach it. So the teachers still have, like, that's providing the science of teaching. So these are the standards we need to meet, these are the things that kids need to have mastered by the end of this school year. Every teacher has the individual capability, that's the art of teaching, and that's why you want to see different teachers providing different scaffolds, providing different opportunities for all the different, you know, learning styles. So it's important to have the curricular piece, because it takes that, the teacher doesn't have to go and build their own. So we are standard-based, but if you give them a curriculum that is addressing those standards, then you're taking out an extra step that they would have to take, so that they can spend more time focusing on building the bridge for the child to get to that mastery wherever they are.
Right. So my thought is, you know, using last year's goal, but trying, how do we focus on that gap, that that art of teaching? Is it resources, is it additional professional development? What what is that? Because I think that's what's going to help us produce, help those kids move up in those those blocks and and bring those children that come in that are further down the path.
So from a
They call it the art of teaching.
Yeah, that from a from a professional perspective.
Yeah.
The professionals in the room.
Well, especially when you're coming from, she's the one that has been closest to the environment of teaching, so you're
Ben.
Oh, yeah, Danny. Yeah, yeah. Well, the elementary and junior high, perfect. Like, what have you seen based on the preliminary numbers too, that you think, looking at this goal, how can we make this goal shifted a little bit, but also capture like the areas that you think are critical when it comes to curriculum and or like these achievement?
It's funny you mention that. We've been talking about this now for how many weeks now? About narrowing in on on what those essential pieces are for teachers to really get stronger in. There's just so much to go into teaching that we can't get better overnight, so we're really looking at differentiating our PD. As Keith just brought up, the SPD is part of the development of our plan. And differentiating our PD to meet the needs of where our teachers are at, but not also holding back those those teachers who are high flyers and who innovate within the classroom. So differentiating our PD is one thing. Identifying ways that our teachers can connect from one grade to the next, we call it vertical articulation. So what does a fifth grader need to be able to do so they are they're prepared for sixth grade? So getting our teachers, it's not just us coming with a plan, but our teachers also have those conversations. So we're looking at ways and and providing time for them to do that. A third thing is just planning. Yes, we have our resources, but curriculums are written for students who are on grade level. We know that we have a large population of our kids who are off of grade level, right? So how can we provide opportunities for our teachers to have planning time so they can diversify their teaching and personalize it with those students' names? So those are three of our areas, and one thing that we've been talking about is what are our focus areas? We call them essential standards. Luckily, the state has just come out with what they believe to be considered essential standards, which is going to help our decision-making. But obviously, we need the classroom teachers' input involved in that conversation as well, so all of these pieces that we believe is what's going to drive better impact in classrooms.
This is a huge goal. When I first read it, I thought, this is a three to five years, that's going to be your goal, three to five years. So just some clarifying questions, this is a student achievement goal. But you're looking across this, when you say, when I say student achievement and curriculum, it's ELA and math, it's everything. Is that what it was?
Last year, it was just math, and this
The curriculum was ELA and math together, or just just a math curriculum?
We just adopted a math curriculum.
So you just adopted it.
Resources, we just adopted it.
Okay. Okay. So even that, in my mind, is a three to five year, because your teachers need time to understand it and practice it, yes, every time they step in front of the students, they probably want to practice that. So I love listening to the discussion, and then if my mind just goes all over to some of the notes that I have. One, so I was looking at a student achievement, let's go broad, thought is go really broad. And I think what you just said hits what I was thinking, focusing on the teachers. I don't, I sometimes when I see the increase the number of students, I get hung up on that. And I don't want to, that's out there, I don't, there, how, how do you want to increase the number of students? Well, I think, Danny, what you just said, and your key performance indicators, excellent, you're starting that, so you adopted the curriculum. So now you're going to the teachers, now you have to give the teachers time to practice that, the skill, the art and skill of the instruction. So it's going to need a couple of years. So what does it take to do that? And you said it, differentiated PD for teachers, so we're flipping it for some, instead of the student focus, your focus is now on the teachers. So the support of the teachers, so that every student is, I'm going to go back to the old, I've heard forever, challenged, supported, and prepared. No matter who they are, because when I see that, I want to see every student progress in the classroom. Just not this group to this here. I want to see everybody, no matter if they have special services, no matter what that's, who that student is, we need to see movement. So I wonder if there's something that can be broad with the key performance indicators, going back to what you said about staff and supporting the staff, because once you have that high-quality instruction that's going to move the needle for everything else, but again, then also caution yourselves, it takes time. You go slow to go fast, go slow to make sure all your teachers are on board with you, and then all of a sudden, three years down the road, we'll be sitting here saying, look at this data, look for you and Al's app, look at the students that move, look where we've moved them. Because I saw it as a student achievement, a safety and security, and a community engagement goals are the three big broad goals. And then what's underneath that, that can be supported in the data. Well, and to me, I was great, I love what you said, and with Danny about the differentiated PD, which I, that didn't even cross my mind, and I think that's why you guys are the experts, which is wonderful, Ben. What came up for me when you said that, Danny, was when I was at Carver, and they were having, what were they calling it?
CTMs.
Yeah, but it was like charting and their stuff, where they're like the, they have a ELA program, can't remember what the name is, but I got to watch the coaching instruction, Stacy and the team there, and they were differentiating their areas of focus based on where the children were landing and were. And to me, what I thought about, which is nothing new, is what we should be doing when we're holding our employees accountable by looking at development and performance metrics and all accountability is like, this is a development plan for you, because you are below standards when it comes to math, or whatever it may be. We don't need to use that language, it can be more strength-based, but to me, that's what came up for me when you said differentiated PD, instead of everyone sitting in the same training, everyone sitting in the same thing, like, someone might be ready to be a super user by already, and maybe they're a champion, and maybe that's a way to incentivize, this person's a high flyer, you're going to be that champion at the school. I don't know, but I love it. I love where this is going. Do schools then create their own goals off of this as their guiding? So this is the guiding, so now as a school principal, I would be
Well, where we are in the system, though, they they actually did put, they just remember, integrated action plans.
Yep, yep.
They were all put in back in May and June, and now and now we have the board, we have the board goals coming here, so most likely, because they will be working with math and ELA, that's what's required of them to this date, so this this just all fits beautifully.
So then that focus of that high-quality instruction, supporting our staff, then when you need the funding, or all of that follows. Now our funding, it's easy to say, if our principal wants teachers to go to a conference, or whatever their focus is at that school, everything's aligned into, I know I saw the Abbott shirt, yes.
Yes, oh, that shirt. You've been watching it. You're doing much better than I do.
So I think what you could do is have this goal be a long-term goal, right? This this specific one will be twenty-five, twenty-six to the end of twenty-eight, twenty-nine, or.
So, but the maybe rewording to the piece of improving student achievement as measured by not increasing the number of students, that will be a result, right, in three to five years?
Well, that's up to you, how measurable you want it measured.
Yeah, but but if we're worth, I mean, to your point, and I do like it, but maybe others don't, is the shift is instead of staying by increasing the number of students or whatever, it's by increasing the skills and the abilities of high-quality instruction, and then the KPIs are whatever we can decide. So that I, that's what I was hearing Lisa say, but I don't know how they're skilled about that.
I mean, I'm just dumbing it down, but isn't that basically the art of teaching? Is that what you were getting at, or my misunderstanding, right? You're talking about developing teachers.
Right, I think what they're saying, if you take away like tying the percent to the actual students moving in the groups.
Oh, that's what I said, you can't, you can't measure it.
Because you were saying that was like your nail and jello to the tree, so if you adjust that part and say you're going to focus, the most, the most impact you're ever going to have is through a teacher. So if we focus on really supporting our teachers, then that is going to naturally improve academics.
And and you could
Right, okay, we're talking about the same thing.
Yeah, and this goal, you could talk about
Kindergarten level.
And this one, you could talk about student growth, right, as the goal? The increase, the student growth in math and ELA.
But isn't the, if I'm understanding both ends of the table, the the goal is to improve teachers' art of teaching, and the hope is that that produces a measurable change over time.
Those two should be connected, right? I mean, yeah.
The 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 goal is to improve the the teacher's ability and skills and resources, tools, everything, all of that that's needed, the planning, things like that, with the hopes that by doing that, that we are going to see performance at the student level increase over three, four, or five years.
So that goal one, you want to take out that proficient and and minimally proficient. You want to talk about increasing student achievement by providing resources for teachers to, I mean, we have to think of something
Yeah.
Much better than what's in my mind right now, which is nothing.
Or are you, are you going to say, no, you wouldn't even?
I wouldn't necessarily tie it to, they're not resource poor, they do have a lot of resources, so I wouldn't tie resources. It's all in, sometimes we have so many resources, it's like, which one is really going to have the most impact? So I don't really think that we need to add more resources, as much as like, we've spent a lot of time crafting an instructional vision that is focused on intentionally planning for rigor. So if we provide time for teachers to actually intentionally
Bingo.
Plan for rigor, they don't need more resources, they have the resources, they need the time to craft their lesson in the way that our kids need it, so.
Yes.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily think that you need to put resources in there as much as using our instructional vision to intentionally plan, so that we can address the needs of every student.
Yes, you know, on the site, visits I've been at, that's, I ask, you know, what do they need? And ninety percent of the time, I hear time.
Yeah, yep.
I need more time. I need less meetings, I need more time.
Yeah. And I think even in our survey, they, there was some feedback around PD in general, and I had had some conversations with teachers about like, oh, we have to go to this PD day, which then if it was taken away, then they would say, it may be like, well, they don't have a PD day. But to the piece of the intentional PD, if you can tie it to their areas of development, it makes more sense. There's more clarity, there's more like, yeah, I need that area, I need more training in that, or I need more practice in that, versus I'm just doing this
Having a meeting just for a meeting.
Yeah, but I like that rewording of that, and then the KPI could be where we would hope to see an increase.
So we, I mean, it would be what Danny just said, right?
Yeah.
The the artic, the differentiation in professional development, vertical articulation, planning time, and then, I don't know, the essential standards, what what's the goal for that this year?
That will be under the umbrella of their school goal. So like, once we have this big goal, then they can pick that one under the umbrella of their school goal. And they can use their own school data to kind of really get into the mining their data to see what their campus needs the most of those.
Okay.
So that would be the goal, right, and the goal would include through these areas, that's what we do, differentiated PD?
Well, we would make those the key performance indicators, so that's that differentiated professional development for teachers.
But how is it, how are you measuring that? I mean, to me, I guess, it's like, are you going to do a certain amount of them, or we're going to create? going to create, like, everyone's going to have IDP? I guess I could see a KPI as like a very tangible result, but.
So one of the things we've been discussing in our conversations, and that might help, is that if you're looking for a teacher who's brand new, there you have some core basic foundations that they need. Classroom management, how do I do that? Lesson planning, how do I do that, right? Where do I go find my resources? How do I understand my curriculum? What does that look like? Math, that's going to be everybody. What is a curriculum like? Well, maybe after a year, I don't want to put a year, but after classification one, now we can move to classification two. Now, these are areas, now you're diversifying your lessons in order to have small group instruction happening in your classrooms, right? Now you're providing scaffolds that are differentiated for each group of students who are performing in your classrooms. That might be category two. Category three now might be the teachers who are innovating in the classrooms. What do we have to do now just to support them? Let them run because they're showing a high efficiency in the classrooms. How, what do we need just to support them? And all of your master, please, those master teachers. They might even be encouraged to deliver PDs to those and have within, within the group, those, those teachers could develop PDs for their staff and for district-wide teachers.
So you really, your, your key performance indicator could be developing, right, developing a framework.
Developing PD paths.
Yeah.
I, and maybe I'm, how I see KPIs from the world outside of this is tangible, how do you know you've made progress? How are you going to know? Is it through, at the end of the year, there's a survey of the teachers and there's an increase in teacher, like their confidence, their ability to, I don't know, I, I don't know what that would look like. But to me, a KPI is a tangible result or an outcome.
Great, but you got to have a baseline before you can have the, the results, so.
There are walkthrough data at the school, so I don't wonder walkthrough data.
Yeah.
Student performance data.
I could say teacher survey, whether it is.
Professional development outcomes. You could say forty-five teachers attended this avid training on a Saturday morning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
PD outcome.
Because I see the goal as like the high arching.
Right.
I see action items that come from the goal that aren't here. Those are things that the experts can define, but that's not for their school. We don't need to do that, I don't think. And the KPIs are measuring it. So that's how I, I view the goals. It doesn't seem like maybe that's how it was viewed last year, which is fine, and it doesn't have to look the way I see it. But to me, it helped me, like, if we're having an overarching goal, and we're, the way that we're wanting to increase student achievement is through these areas, each school will define what those areas look like, because that's what their team goals. And then our KPIs as a board is saying, we are going to be able to tell and feel good about this at the end of the year because we have some walkthrough data, we have increase in student achievement, whether it be little, or it might be, look like in different areas, and then the teacher surveys or something, I don't know.
And I, I just want to make sure that we're not getting too far down the path of the how they're going to accomplish it. We're just.
That's why I'm saying we take that out of it.
Right, the core academic improvement, right? There's that. Now we just have to figure out how to accomplish, how do we, how do we measure that? Because everything in between those two lines is that they're discretion.
Right, so what we could do is have the goal, and we don't have to call them key performance indicators, we could call them objectives.
There you go.
And that is just for any instruction, vertical articulation, and planning time. They take that, and then they do all the rest of it. Like, that's just what, what you are asking them to focus on.
But that's a, that's as a response to how would you improve academics, right?
Right, yes.
So we're, we're, I don't want to go down the path of.
No, telling them what to do.
Well, yeah, and that's kind of telling about the, the differentiating, and that's, because if they come up with something in six weeks that's not that, that's not part of the goal anymore.
Then they come back to you and say, that's, we don't want that anymore. That's not.
Yeah, but I don't want to keep going back and forth. I don't want to keep.
That's how goals, that's how goals work.
It should be living and breathing, you know.
The goal should be at a, at a higher level, allowing, with the conversations that, okay, we expect you to find a way, because if those, those are not the way to go, and they, because obviously they've been talking about it for a while now, right?
Yeah, they've been talking about it for years. It's about our science.
But I think, so even saying, building a structure for differentiation in our PD, we've already talked about having a monthly meeting with our learning services director, you know, looking at the core of that to see how can, again, without telling her how to restructure it, kind of giving some guidelines. So that's the same thing that we're talking about here. Just simply restructuring and different, we don't differentiate right now.
Right.
I'll be like, very transparent, and like, the teachers get these offerings, they go. So if just creating a structure, even listing that as like, hey, by the end of this year, there's going to be a structure in place where teachers can go down different learning paths, just like we create for kids, right? So like Jenny said, as, as a principal, I can say, you know, Keith, you need to go to the, the classroom management academy, because it looks like you've been struggling the last couple walkthroughs. I made that part of, you know, something you're going to do, but David, you're going to go to this one that's about, you know, innovating in your classroom, because I just want to help you grow your, you know, the, the principal can have that discretion, but we need that system built so that I can then guide people there.
So the hierarchy would be the goal establishes, the board establishes a high-level goal with, with an outcome. Superintendent takes that and then directs, okay, these are, through brainstorming, we're going to establish these things, and that's the way I think that we should go. Because at the end of the year, you're not evaluated.
He is.
Right? So I appreciate everybody, and it sounds to me like you guys are on the right track, but I think us as a board, who luckily, we have a couple of board members that are very versed in the education system, but that's not the responsibility of the school board. The school board is to set a higher, a higher level goal of improving academics through something with the teachers, right? Because we all agree that we need to do something at the teacher level, right? So that's our goal. And then, at least that's my, my two cents on this, because I don't want to get into that, because I want to try to keep this intact, as much as we're setting a goal for you. You, through brainstorming, will establish how you're going to get that accomplished. Now, we just have to figure out how we're going to measure something like that.
So let's just do goals then. The board just does goals. They develop everything else. We don't have key, key performance indicators, we're just going with goals in the coming year.
I, I think that's the best way to go about it, to allow the most freedom.
We have already been working on the details.
Yes, I know. And that was more, what I was hearing was the brainstorming that, I, I'm glad you're already doing this, because you're already halfway down the road, right? We're not the right audience for that brainstorming.
Yeah.
Trust me. This end of the board is definitely not the audience for that. Some of what you, I'm like.
Another thing we're relying on. I didn't have, Monica. We are not the qualified people to decide.
Right.
Okay, so we're going to do one main academic goal.
Focused on the teachers, because everybody agree that the teachers should be the focus this year?
Hundred percent.
Okay, great.
Okay, so we want academic improvement through the teacher as the focus.
Yeah, that's right. So I will draft something, and then you all can play.
Okay.
Do what you want with it. Let me know what you ended up with. So that's one goal. Then goal two, you also talked about, do we need to continue this? I think in terms of the facility and educational needs, that needs to carry through.
With those, I think so.
So do you want to be more specific about that goal? In terms of the broader, you know, like, goal two? Do you want to make it specific to the educational and facility needs for your exceptional students?
I don't think that's the only group of students we have that need additional space. We're growing in both ways on the eastern half of our district, and so our exceptional students certainly need a space, but our, our other students need space.
Everybody needs space.
Yeah, so I, I wouldn't want to restrict it to just that one group of students.
Okay. So what is the sec, is the second goal the same? Or are we going to be more? It's on the screen. Do we, goal two, does that stay the same?
The rest.
Maybe it's, maybe adequate. We don't have adequate space in our district for all of our students, so that's, you know, something, that's a, maybe a term I would throw, or enough, I don't know what the technical term for enough is.
Adequate sounds good.
So you're thinking of provide a safe, adequate, and modern, or is what you're thinking to add that word?
Yeah, I think, I think that might be something to look at, because our, I think our issue right now is more around the volume of space we have than it is maybe the other two. I think modern would be fantastic, but if I had to make a list, enough or adequate would be number one.
Okay.
And then it would be modern, and of course, if we build something, it's not going to be unsafe. So I think that kind of folds into where we are. So I think having enough space is probably, to me, the top priority for us right now, based on the, the issues and the boundaries and the, the capacity we have in the eastern side.
And so it's, it's really about district-wide providing that.
Yes.
Yeah.
We are way overloaded on the east end, we are suffering on the north end. We need to figure out a redistricting means or something to be able to fill up the schools completely.
Okay, so I'll rework that, too. And then you guys can take it and run with it, change it however you want. Okay, do we have a goal three?
Enrollment. My thoughts were, we've just recently had probably one of the most difficult scenarios for a school board. You will never win changing boundaries. You can't. It's never happened, I don't think I've ever seen where they changed boundaries at school, and every parent and every community member was jumping up and down for joy.
Nobody will be happy.
It is a, it is a losing scenario. So without having to address boundaries, without a, because that was one of the things that, quite honestly, I was rather embarrassed about when they said, well, this is just a temporary fix. Things are changing. We, we need a bigger plan to level enrollment, change enrollment across the district, right? Whether that's closing down, voluntarily closing down a school in town, and building one in the foothills. Talking with the state to see if they're going to cover O and M on that, we've had a couple of conversations on that. At least that gets us off the hook for the operations and maintenance, if the, the state will do that. Well, what does it look like changing schools? But what can, what can the district do to try to shift enrollment to ease up the pressure on the high-pressure schools and, and increase the number in the others? This is going to be a cycle, right? Because it's demographics. The old schools are in neighborhoods with grandparents who eventually will pass on, and young families that can afford the houses, they are going to move in, and we're going to see this drop in students because it's the grandparents, and then over time, we're going to see this overcrowding in town, because now that's where the affordable housing is for young families with kids, and they're going to be moving back. This, it's.
And then in the east, you're going to be like, what are we going to do in the east?
We got twenty-five schools and nobody's going there, right? So a long-term plan on enrollment with what we have and what we have control of, what does that look like? How can we establish that? Because that, that will help ease the parents when we come to them, if we have to do a border change, to say, look, here, here's our strategic plan for all the schools. Here's what we're looking for, you're just a small piece in this overall, we have put in our due diligence, and this is what we found to be best for the entire community in District One. And we won't win.
No.
But at least we can stand our ground and say, this is the best way forward.
We're not picking on you as, as a neighborhood, we are doing this as a community.
Correct. So we need to figure out, writing a goal to balance out enrollment across the district.
So address, yeah, okay, right.
Does everybody agree that that's a rather important?
Well, it's really demographic and enrollment, right? Because you need to look at what your demographics are in those.
That strategic plan is going to be in-depth. Because it's, it's not addressing, like you said, picking on one school or one neighborhood, it's looking at the district as a whole.
So you're looking at that as a, like, goal three, or that that's part of goal two, like the verbiage? Because part of, I mean, goal two is, right now is providing adequate, like, learning environment, and that is tied to, like, having the space and the capacity. So to me, I kind of see it as.
Well, it just depends on how they address it, right? You can address it through brick and mortar, you can address it by many means, but the first one is facilities, right? This, the, the third one would be.
Much bigger, like.
A much bigger, changing boundaries, which doesn't change facilities, it just changes boundaries.
Yeah, to me, again, that's the how, but the, the goal itself is, in order to meet goal two right now, there is lots of, there's revenue, like, creative revenue, which we've already have, started to have those conversations. There's evaluating boundaries, I think is a piece of it. I think, again, there's the piece of like the E S S, because that's the only population that's increasing in our enrollment. And unfortunately, what's happening a lot is we're having to move kids that, they're trying to get a routine, and then, I don't know, they get a diagnosis, or a different diagnosis in that school doesn't have the means to be able to care for them, so then they're moving, let's say. But to me, it's all part of that goal, and maybe we can make that more broad, and then we can have another goal.
And I, I mean, if, if it, if it's not too big of a goal, right? I don't want to make monster goals. If it's not too big of a goal to address the facilities themselves, and a goal to address the enrollment itself.
Well, I think the facilities really is more about infrastructure.
Right, that's how I see it.
That's the physical building.
Correct.
Not, not the programs that are there, or.
Enrollment is.
An enrollment.
Programs, boundaries. Other things, programs, it has nothing to do with brick and mortar or infrastructure, it has to do with the, the enrollment, not facilities. They will utilize the facilities most likely.
I mean, it's all related, obviously.
Yeah, I guess, I don't know, for me, we've talked about this, that length, about the enrollment, there's many reasons impacting enrollment. There's school choice, there's the area of town, there's lots of different things.
But I think that's what he's saying, take an audit of that whole.
Correct.
Yeah.
And, and then, again, like, changing people's mindsets is not just a, it's a much longer-term goal, of getting people.
It's another long-term goal.
Yeah. But, and maybe because how we've been viewing it in our conversations in our last strategy session was, how do we rethink our current brick and mortars to address the enrollment issue? So we've kind of combined as a way of, and part of that conversation was, do we use a school to be a magnet school that has low enrollment? So we've already had some of this, so I guess to me, I'm seeing them very connected. They don't have to be at all. And, yeah.
Well, so we, I, I mean, we'll pencil in enrollment, right? Figure out how we can come up with that, if it's necessary to push it in the other one, but then we need to see all of our goals that everybody's bringing to the table, right? So I don't, I don't want to cram it into another one, because I think that's going to make it a pretty massive.
Unachievable.
Goal. Because we want to see on the individual, right?
Well, whether it's separate or together, it's still a massive goal, right? So it could be goal number three, which, actually, goal number three to you, it's, again, all interconnected. In order to increase enrollment, you're going to have parent, you got to bring the In order to increase enrollment, you're going to have parent, you got to bring the parents and the community along. So you really can, it doesn't matter where it goes. But again, we're talking about a year goal, which can then turn into, in our minds, as long as we're aligned, that this isn't going to happen overnight. We're not going to shift people's mindsets overnight. And if we're okay with that, then we can tell Dennis next year when we're looking at his review, like, oh, oh, enrollment wasn't. Because it's not going to be this huge.
Right.
Outcome within a year, as long as we're with that. But again, goal number three, if we want to increase enrollment. And I, to me, I guess I worry about.
I don't think it's about increasing enrollment. I think it's maybe, and maybe I'm wrong, correct me if I'm not. It's about looking at the whole system, every piece that you have that is related to enrollment. So it could be demographics, it could be.
Yeah.
All of those things. Not just an increase enrollment, but to examine the.
Not even asking for enrollment to change by one student this year. It's, we got to have long-term goals, right? So if we can't accomplish things in a year, long-term goals are necessary for success. Facilities, obviously, is a long-term goal. Enrollment is obviously a long-term goal. And, you know, if we want to put in public buy-in to this and the, you know, current part of the goal, getting parents and, and the community behind this strategic plan to say, hey, we're going to do this. Because it's probably a five-year-plus plan to do this. And I, and I'm not pretending that it's less. So even if I don't, if I, I would be happy if I didn't see a single student move from the foothills to town. As long as we're putting together a strategic plan on how we're going to address this. Because I don't want Dennis coming to the board to move boundaries on another school if we don't have an overarching plan of how that's going to play into that. Because then we're going to undo it in a few years. And now we're really going to irritate parents. And we're being irresponsible if we don't have an overarching strategic plan on how we're going to address this.
Long-term vision of what we're, for sure. I think we're all speaking the same language. It's just like logistics of where it lands.
Yeah.
I guess for me, what, what I heard was an increase enrollment. Not sure that's happening in today's environment. Overall, like, we're going to see these huge numbers, but maybe there's stability. We say you had brought up, like, overcapacity versus undercapacity, like maybe not yet? Just to understand, so is there going to trend to decrease enrollment?
Yes, in towns decreasing enrollment.
So you have overcapacity out this way and we have declining enrollment in.
On the northern end, yeah.
So you would create a goal that you would look at enrollment, you'd look at capacity, you'd look at health of facilities. You would look at all, you know, all sorts of.
Building a strategic plan is maybe the goal, which would encompass boundaries, would encompass enrollment, would encompass facilities, would encompass funding, would encompass a lot of those. I mean, we could spend year one building the framework of what are the pieces that need to be involved? How are they linked, connected? What impacts do they have? And that could be conversation number one for year one is.
Well, you already created a foundation in that first meeting about building a, and it really was more financial-based, but I love that, building a strategic plan this year of how we're going to address all of these.
Yeah. Because there are a lot of moving parts when you look at that boundary enrollment piece. So how do we, how do we kind of put that on paper and have a framework? Is there, what's that?
That was only 200 students.
Right, yep. But how do we know that if we move this toggle here, it's going to have these kinds of impacts? And at least being able to outline that in year one so those conversations can be maybe more in-depth or built upon.
Right, so. Yeah, a strategic, I think that it's important. I, a strategic plan on enrollment with the.
That addresses enrollment, demographic.
Plan, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you guys, does that settle well with everybody?
Yeah.
Strategic plan for enrollment? And we won't expect to see any changes this year, except for we'll see progress on a plan.
For sure, of how we're going to address it.
Yeah.
And then be able to communicate that to the public, which is, or in the parents, which is.
So this year's plan will be build a plan.
Build a, build a plan.
Yes.
A meeting before the meeting.
Exactly.
Okay, so that's three goals. So that seems sufficient, I think, right? Two of them.
That's good, no, I think that's good.
Two of them are probably longer-term goals.
Sure.
Um, one and three are probably longer-term goals. Um. I do want to, I just want to give you a little bit of a, a little plug for the law conference because we are going to have a session on what to do with it when enrollment changes. So, um, we're going to have an attorney talk about what to do with district real estate. And then we're going to have a, a former superintendent talk about school closures, school repurposing, the process that was utilized, um, when that hap-. I myself voted to close six schools in 12 years. But you know what? It was done with so little. The process that we used was so good. By the time we got to that point, there was no one that called to the public, there was.
With adequate planning.
Yes, exactly.
And a strategic plan and transparency with the public, they may not like it. But when they see the amount of effort put into it across the board, they can accept it.
Yeah.
Right? And so one of the, and if anybody has other goals in there, I'm just taking my turn. But, uh, I don't want this to be one of the formal goals. But I'd like everybody's feedback on, uh, Julie said she'll put together the superintendent evaluation tool and get it sent out to us. An informal evaluation. And just to kind of go over the, the highlighted areas in here. And I talked to Dennis a little bit about this. What I'm looking for is a way that we can evaluate the soft skills and the act, day-to-day activities with the board and what we've observed to give him feedback that's not necessarily in the goals, right? And maybe we find this valuable enough to add it to the goals. But they, they address, and I kind of just detailed them out there, but, you know, ethics and professional norms, mission, vision, values, things like articulates, advocates and cultivates a shared understanding and commitment to mission, vision and core values within the district and community. District culture, innovation, uh, instruction assessment, curriculum planning and development, budget and finance, which we already know that's going to be stellar, operations, human resources. So all the, the things that he does every day, because these goals are interesting. And I've, I've looked at Crane, right? They have a, is it 12, 15 page? Ask your brother about it. There, there's a, there's a long line by line and they go through and meets, exceeds, doesn't. And it goes down and it tallies up at the bottom. And that's a percentage of what's, of the performance pay of the superintendent. I'm not going in that direction. I think that we as a board can provide this feedback midway and at the end to Dennis to show him how our interaction as board members have been with him and what we've observed directly. This isn't for, somebody called me and told me that, you know, he cussed at him. Unless you were there, we can't really.
I wouldn't do that.
I mean, maybe, maybe his brother.
Not even his folks game?
I'm, may get frustrated as a coach, but I'm not there anymore, so they won't be able to report that.
So if everybody would like to participate in this, I think we should all, or none of us. If, if this is something that everybody's willing to do and an informal evaluation twice a year, I think it's going to help Dennis in his progression to where we expect him to be.
I like that.
So like, um, we're setting goals now. We'll have a mid-year review and then we'll do a year-end.
Yeah.
I would love to be a part of that.
Okay, so then if you don't mind sending all of us.
I sent it to you already, but I can send it to all of you.
Yeah, and we'll go through it and then you can explain, because there's a, a page on here that kind of.
Yeah, so.
I don't want to do like this. You know, each of the headers is what I'm looking at. Yeah, something short, 10.
Yeah.
10 or less that we can.
Questions that were.
So what I can do is send it to all of you. I mean, what, and I explained to Keith before the meeting started, what we did, we got a new superintendent in Paradise Valley, is we had them do that and do a self-evaluation. And then we just provided feedback about what the self-evaluation was.
Okay.
Just because you're, you know, right? And it was, one of my board members was like, that's not going to work. That he's not, it's not going to work. But it really did work because he marked himself developing in things that he knew he needed to develop on. And we knew he needed to develop on. And it was very clear that we were on the same page as we were going through the year. So, um, there is, that tool has been revised, so that is not. Yeah, that's not a, not a new document. Um, I sent the revised document to Keith. I'll send it to the rest of you so you can see it. There's a couple of things in there. There is a final kind of summary evaluation tool that ranks each of the, um, standards. So you're not giving all of the, like, real itty-bitty detail like you're talking about with, with Crane. So I'll, I'll kind of write an email and explain the document to you and then you can, and attach it so you can see it.
Thank you. Okay, great. Anybody else bring any, any goals that they would like to see discussed?
I don't know if you call it a goal or how you even address that. And I know that you're already working on that is disciplinary actions, is how do we address those? How do we, is there something in the handbook that says this is the purpose of the disciplinary actions? Is saying this is why we do what we do? This is the outcome that we expect from those disciplinary actions? Um, how are they being handled from warning to possible expulsion? Um, are we having seven warnings for the same infractions? Or how, how do we address the safe, that issue of this aspect where it says provide a safe environment? Because there is a lot of people in the community that I've talked to that that's the reason why they're pulling their kids out of public school is because they don't feel safe.
But is there data like supporting that we're having disciplinary issues in District One? Or like, just like, is our, our, is our current process? Do we have information that's actually showing that we?
The only data that I can give you is what I hear from the parents.
I'm asking the ones that actually do the discipline.
There's two different things right there, right? So the purpose of discipline and how we want, I think, is different than what we're applying. So when we look at discipline, you're not looking to be punitive and to, the, the sole purpose of discipline is not punish.
Right.
It is to change the behavior. So we are seeking to change the behavior. So over the last couple of years, we have definitely transitioned to try and do more restorative practices. So restorative practices do still require the parent to agree to that because it is something that is different than a traditional consequence. If a parent wants, no, just suspend my student, we can also do that too. We do do that. But offering alternatives to that, because really sometimes deepening their understanding of how their behaviors affect others is a great way to try and get them to then change that behavior.
Right.
So I think there, the purpose is not solely to punish. The purpose is to get that behavior to change so that they can be aware of how they're impacting their learning environment as well as everybody else around them.
Right.
So I mean, we certainly, there is a lot of data of, kids are getting consequences applied to them, whether you're thinking about the traditional or if parents are agreeing to restorative practices. And I think what that looks like at an elementary school is different than what it looks like at a middle school. There's definitely, you know, a lot more impact at a middle school with things that are just against the law, right? So there's, there's tobacco, there's marijuana, there's all those things that, um, are automatic. Like, they have to have those, those consequences. That's guided by statute. But when we're talking about somebody, you know, at my previous campus, I had preschoolers, they start at three, all the way to fifth graders. So what that discipline looks like and what the consequences look like.
Is much different.
Is much different. And every child is entitled to their free and public education. So the sole purpose is always going to be to reintegrate that child back into their classroom.
Absolutely.
Kids do not learn the social skills that they need by being excluded.
And they don't need to be just sent home. That's not what I'm saying.
Right. So there are a lot of steps that we take to try and correct those behaviors, to get them on a path where they're becoming more self-aware so that they, you know, it just depends. It, it runs a gamut of different behaviors. So, um, each one has different path that you can take there. We have guidelines, but it still is at the principal's discretion based on what is going on and you work with those parents.
Yeah.
Sometimes parents have an, uh, we have to deepen parent understanding too about what these things are and what the actual definition of some of these things are. And I think sometimes if, if Dennis calls me a name, he was mean and he was rude, but he's not a bully because that's the first time he's ever done that. So I'm not going to label him as a bully and say he's a bully. I'm going to say he made a mistake and I'm going to work with him. How do we get him to correct his mistake? So that kind of evolves as you go over. If he continues to do that and he's been told to stop, that's a different scenario. So all those things you have to go through and look. Sometimes parents think that the first time their child is called a name, that that's bullying. These are children, they're five, they're six, they're eight. Like, they, they're going to make mistakes. So we need to give them an opportunity to learn from those mistakes and then get on the right path. So I guess, to me, there are two different questions. Do we have data to say that we are providing a lot of consequence? Yes. We track all of that. We do have all of the numbers. We know that. Is there, what our purpose is? I think that's a different thing that we need to deepen understanding on that too. Because sometimes parents don't want the restored. Just give them the suspension, you know, so.
And, and you're thinking, they're just going to go home and play video games.
Exactly.
That's exactly what, yeah, and that's not, yeah. I don't, I don't think that they should be sent home. I think that there should be sort of mediation, counseling, um, you know, behavioral health service.
Right, those are all restorative practices.
Those things should be put into play.
And unfortunately, like, behavioral health services, that is, that's out of our, like, purview. We can, we can recommend that, but that's getting down to the root of their behavior. So that's a different scenario and that goes to the parent. We can say, this is something that is clinical and our school counselor cannot work. A school counselor is there to work with, you know, friendship issues or I don't, you know, my dog died and I'm having a hard time dealing with, you know, losing somebody really close to me. Like, they do with those things, but they are school counselors, they are not clinicians, they're not therapists and they can't provide therapy. And I think we do have kids that have suffered traumas within their life that are out of their control and they need therapy. And that is.
Do you have any of that on any of the school grounds at all? Any, any sort of a therapist, should say, or behavioral health or none of that?
No. And even Huma in general is very limited on what we have for pediatrics. So one of the things we did this year was we partnered with Cartwheel, which is sponsored through Arizona Department of Education. So Cartwheel is a, it's a telehealth service and they can do all of those things. So we, we just started in April when we became aware of that. And the parent response has been really good. So parents can refer, the school counselor can refer, a principal can refer. Um, and then it's, it's scaled. So if you're on access, then it would be free. And then it's scaled based on what kind of, they work with the parents to say, this is how much these services would cost for you. For some people, it may be free, for others, it's going to be on a scale. And that has had a real nice response because the waiting time is very short. Whereas services here, like, our parents often are waiting eight months to a year to get a service that they need for behavioral health because we just, we don't have enough providers here. So, and those are.
And there aren't any, there aren't enough anywhere.
There's not enough anywhere.
There's not enough in Phoenix either.
Yeah.
Right.
So even they have benefited from like the telehealth through Cartwheel for depending on what the need is. Um, because it, you know, it runs the range of whether a student needs pre, pre-therapy or maybe they need trauma therapy or maybe they, you know, it, all of those things, they can, they have clinicians on staff and they're able to provide that. So that's been a real nice addition that was provided through a grant with, with ADE. But, um, like, behavioral health is a whole other, um, need that we have on our campuses. But that is not what school counselors are, they're not licensed to do that, so.
How do we address that then as a school or as a district? How do you, how do you even address those people who are having those issues? That are, you know, your counselors can't handle them, so now what?
Right, so that is you refer them out to community health. And that's the unfortunate part is there are not enough providers in this community. So that's why sometimes parents are waiting, you know, a range that can be up to a year.
And while that child's waiting for the community health services, what are you doing with that child's behavioral issues at school?
Well, I mean, we create behavior intervention plans, we do check-in, check-out plans with them. We create incentive things that, you know, you, you run the gamma. We try every resource that we have.
Right.
Because our whole goal is to always get them back into class so they can learn. We don't want these behavioral issues to be a barrier to their learning.
No, we want them to learn. We want them to learn from their mistake and grow on, yeah, for sure.
I got to add to something I, I can't appreciate enough from Dennis he's bringing forward, a challenge for our group. We're thinking about is how to support the classroom teacher. So there's enough already on a classroom teacher's shoulders to just teach. So having a child who's at, who's having these behaviors, how do we support them? So that's, that's another thing we've been talking about is how to, how to provide behavioral supports. So we're exploring some ideas. We have admin council, which is when we meet with all of our directors and principals this Thursday, Friday. We want to bring them in, hoop them in to some ideas that we've had, uh, after we've heard their brainstorming as ideas. So Dennis and Dwayne and Leanna met with all the principals before summer break and said, hey, you've had a few months, I just want you to think about what could we provide at the district to support you at the sites to help address student behavioral needs? Because there is a lack of community resources, we got to come up with a solution. We got to figure it out because other 29 kids are suffering and that teacher is leaving education because.
Right.
There's nothing there. And they're frustrated and there's nothing in the community. So kudos to Dennis and kudos to Dwayne and Leanna for having those conversations already. So we're excited to see what they read on Thursday, Friday. But we also got a plan as a backup.
Yeah, if we don't hear anything, we know what we're doing.
So we got a plan. We also want to take this idea and get, so, get feedback from our teachers. That's important. They're, they're in the trenches.
Yeah, they're, they're the ones, they're it.
Yep, and then our counselors too, because they're the ones that also, that's that first, first line of connection, right? So those are all plans that we have and Dennis and I are presenting that Thursday or Friday. I think it's Thursday.
So if you ask teachers about what's, what impedes learning, I'm sure that's going to be in the top couple responses.
That disrupt nationally.
Disrupt a student. So part of goal one, it sounds to me like that will be.
Need to handle that.
Should be addressed, right? I mean, you've brought up the concern.
Differentiate professional development.
Right, you've brought up the concern, is that something to think about? Not telling them how to do it, but.
Yeah.
It does, it does highlight one of your focuses.
But that is a whole skill set. It's a whole skill set that you need to learn as a teacher to de-escalate students. And it's just not a natural thing. And people don't, most people will do what their parents did with them, which isn't always like ideal, right?
You don't want to know that.
It's not legal, Eddie. It's not legal, Eddie. I plead the fifth.
But I mean, they have to learn to de-escalate.
In goal one.
Yeah.
Because, because we've centered that around the teachers.
Yes.
Yep. And if you, like I said, if you ask
We know that teachers who engage students the best have the least amount of disruptions going on in their classrooms.
Makes sense.
Engagement and discipline go hand in hand.
We do have a plan in short term, like, starting this year, can we have a depending upon if we can show that what we're doing in our small plan can get rolled out as a larger district-wide focus.
I'm just glad to hear that. That was the first initiatives that you took up. You know, you coming in, that was the first thing I heard out of you was we were going to do disciplinary actions and procedures. You know, you're going to have a report on that in August, so I'm, I'm looking forward to it.
Corey, I think you were going to bring something up? What? You didn't have a goal?
No. You don't want more than three goals. We had to be in a performance management, I'm like, why do you have 15 goals?
I got the side eye, so.
They're all interconnected. I think, and even Jess right now, it's all about providing the opportunity in the space for teachers to be the most, to reach their potential.
Yes.
And that's classroom management, that's being able to instruct the curriculum in a way that those students can understand. And so I think it's all tied together. I think it's great.
It is.
I'm happy.
Good. Okay. Thank you. You comfortable with your challenges, Dennis?
Yes, sir. We got it. We got a good team. Yeah. Mission accepted. Will this self-destruct?
All right. Well, then that brings us to adjourning the meeting. So nobody has anything else to say?
Thank you, everybody.
Yep, thank you. Adjourn the meeting.